I'll call the meeting to order and roll call, please.
Mr. Holroyd?
Yes.
Mrs. Knoll?
Yes.
Mr. Drury?
Present.
Mr. Rome?
Here.
Mr. Shepherd?
Here.
Madam Chair?
Thank you very much. I'm going to call on Sneh Hasha, member of the Youth Commission, for the invocation. Would you like to use the microphone down there, please? Now we can hear you.
Okay. Good evening, everyone. Let us take a moment to pause and reflect as we begin tonight's meeting. We come together as a community dedicated to service, to making your county a place where we can all thrive. May the discussion held here tonight be guided by wisdom, respect, and compassion. Let our decisions reflect not only what is practical, but also what is right for our neighbors, for our youth, and for generations to come. May we remember the value of listening with open minds, leading with integrity, and working together in spirit of unity and understanding. We're grateful for the commitment of our leaders, staff, and citizens who continue to make your county a place of growth, opportunity, and kindness. Thank you.
Thank you very much. The Pledge of Allegiance will now be given by Abby Sheldon. You all stand, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. For our first presentation tonight, I'm calling on Delegate Chad Green for two presentations. And Senator Danny Diggs as well. Senator, Delegate, join us.
Ms. Knoll, if we could ask you, if this presentation starts off... This presentation starts off as always. There you go. This presentation starts off as always. Well, Ms. Knoll, if you could join us down here. We bring you greetings from the Capitol. This is House Joint Resolution 535, commending Sheila Knoll, agreed on by the House of Delegates, February 3rd, 2025, and agreed by the Senate, February 6th. Now, you noticed the Senate was a little bit slower in doing that.
More deliberate.
More deliberate, okay. All right. Sheila Knoll, a longtime member of the York County Board of Supervisors, has served the residents of the county with dedication and distinction for 30 years. Over the course of her career in public service, Sheila has represented the residents of District 2 and served terms as Chair, Vice Chair, and the York County Board of Supervisors. Sheila has built a strong relationship with her constituents to ensure that every resident felt their voice could be heard, and she promoted the importance of good communication, transparency, and local government. During her tenure at the York County Board of Supervisors, Sheila worked closely with local businesses, tourism, historical organizations, county significant population of active-duty service members, and other stakeholders to maintain York County's unique and vibrant character. Whereas outside her duties as York County Board of Supervisors, Sheila has been active in the Virginia Association of Counties, providing her wise insights to the Local Government Advisory Committee and to the Chesapeake Executive Council. Whereas Sheila Knoll has served the residents of York County with the utmost dedication, integrity, and distinctness, working diligently to preserve, protect, and improve the county for future generations. Therefore, be it resolved that the House of Delegates and the Senate concurring, that's Danny's group, and the General Assembly hereby commend Sheila Knoll for her 30 years, 30 years of that, think of that, folks, 30 years of service to the residents of York County. Be it further resolved that the Clerk of the House of Delegates prepare a copy of this resolution for presentation to Sheila Knoll's expression of the General Assembly's admiration for her personal and professional achievements. House Patrons Green, Cordoza, Senate Diggs.
Oh, guys, I can't begin to say how honored I am that you've gone to the trouble to do this. That's not what I got in this job for. It has been a wonderful adventure as long as I've been able to do it, and I continue to do it. I think the citizens of York County are the ones that really deserve the praise and the acclamation because they are the ones that make York County what it is. But I thank you both very, very much for your kind consideration of me.
Sheila, I would just like to say it was always a pleasure working with you while I served on the Board of Supervisors, and I have the fondest of memories.
The long and the short of it.
The long and the short of it.
And Sheila, thank you. You were on the Board of Supervisors my entire tenure while I was the Sheriff.
Wish I was.
You were very helpful most of the time. No, all the time. So, thank you so much, and we appreciate all that you've done.
Thank you so much, boys.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So, when I put these resolutions in, the clerk said, 30 years, there must be a misprint, there must be a typo. And I said, no. And he said, well, you've got another one you've put in for 25 years. So, Tom Shepherd, if you could come down here?
I want to tell you right now, I'm in need of money.
I'm still paying you after 30 years.
You've got five more to go. All right. House Joint Resolution 536, commending Thomas G. Shepherd, agreed by the House on February 3rd. I don't know what was going on in the Senate, but they waited until February 6th. Whereas, Thomas G. Shepherd, longtime member of the York County Board of Supervisors, has served the residents of York County with dedication and distinction for 25 years. Over the course of his career in public office, Thomas G. Shepherd, Tom Shepherd, has presented the residents of District 5 and served terms of Chair and York County Board of Supervisors. During his tenure on the York County Board of Supervisors, Tom has worked closely with local businesses, tourism, historical organizations, county significant population of active-duty military service members, and other stakeholders to maintain York County's unique vibrant character. Whereas, for nearly two decades, Tom Shepherd has represented York County on the Hampton Roads Military and Federal Facilities Alliance to preserve and grow the role of military service members and federal workers in the economy. That's quite an accomplishment, Tom. Tom Shepherd has long specialized in transportation policy, serving as the York County's representative on the Hampton Roads Transportation Planning Organization and a Commissioner on the Hampton Roads Transportation Accountability Commission. Tom Shepherd has also supported responsible development in the region as the Commissioner on the Hampton Roads Planning District Commission and a member of the Board of Directors of the Virginia Association of Planning Districts Commissions. Whereas, Tom Shepherd has served the residents of York County with the utmost dedication, integrity, distinction, working diligently to preserve, protect, and improve the county for future generations. Now for be it resolved by the House of Delegates and the Senate concurring that the General Assembly hereby commend Thomas G. Shepherd for his 25 years of service to the residents of York County. And be it further resolved that the Clerk of the House of Delegates prepare a copy of this resolution for presentation to Thomas G. Shepherd as an expression of the General Assembly's admiration for his personal and professional achievements. Patrons Green, Cordoza, in the House, and the Senate, Diggs.
Ladies and gentlemen, I tell you, all this does, it just tells me I'm getting older. Retirement, or it wasn't some milestone along the way, but this is really, really appreciated. You know, we dedicate our lives to this, and you guys have experienced the wonderfulness of campaigning, and you just happen to do it in a bigger setting nowadays. But, yeah, we don't do this, definitely don't do it for the money, and we'll do it for all the glory. We do it for the fact that we can have an impact on our community, and a positive impact. And I just, it's wonderful to see the young people here tonight, to know that, you know, there's a future for you guys to, if you want to get up here and do this sort of thing, it's that, you know, you think about it. So, anyway, this is very meaningful. I'm very honored. Thank you very much. You gentlemen have just, you know, just made my day, so.
Tom, it was a pleasure when I served with you on the board, and I couldn't do it for a better person.
No, thank you. And Sheriff, oh, I'm sorry. A lot of good years on this, so, great. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Are we done now?
Yep, yeah, you got it.
I'm going down the list to see what's next. Okay, I think now I'm going to have an introduction to the York County Youth Commission. Jacob Corbett, you're the Chair. Would you please come forward? Oops. We'll do you first, then I'll do the next group. Go ahead.
Good evening, York County citizens, and thank you to the Board of Supervisors for allowing me to speak tonight. My name is Jacob Corbett, and I am the Chair of the York County Youth Commission. The York County Youth Commission, or the YCYC, is a group of 20 high school students with four student representatives from each of the county's five districts. All members of the YCYC submit applications and are selected by the Board of Supervisors representative from their respective districts. The Youth Commission serves as a communications link between the youth of York County and the Board of Supervisors by researching and presenting student issues, problems, needs, ideas, and suggestions. by researching and presenting student issues, problems, needs, ideas, and suggestions. The YCYC also makes recommendations regarding programs provided to youth and participates in their establishment when appropriate. Service on the YCYC increases members' knowledge of local government and provides opportunities for leadership skills development and close teamwork with other students from across the county. It gives me great pleasure to introduce the York County, York County's 2025 to 2026 Youth Commission. From District 1, Jesse Koak. Abigail Sheldon. Alexandra Hayes. From District 2, Lila Harmon. Michaela Scott. Julianne McMichael. And Ann Elizabeth Cherian. From District 3, myself, Jacob Corbett. Kate Hogan. Natalie Moss. And Brady Torres. From District 4, Caitlin Smith. Luis Wong. Sophia Connercutt. And Evan Sturgill. From District 5, Don Yor Babashinov. Eddie Zhu. Snehah Shaw. And Nathaniel Dunster. At this time, I would like all 2025, 2026 Youth Commission members to please stand. Some upcoming initiatives for the YCYC include the York County Parks and Recreation Halloween Bash this Friday, the Pause at the River event this Saturday, a Goodwin Neck Adopt a Highway cleanup, assisting with the Mayflower Marathon Food Drive, and assisting with the York County Tree Lighting Ceremony. We hosted our October monthly meeting yesterday and decided on some additional initiatives to implement in the coming months. These include a partnership with the House of Mercy Organization, peer student interviews, and a public relations effort such as videos and social media posts.
Thank you all very, very much. You've got a huge agenda, just getting started, and I'm excited for you, because I know you will enjoy every minute of it. And this is a learning experience for you, and it's a learning experience of the people who work with you. So, I just hope that you enjoy the time. I hope you learn a lot, and I hope after you're finished with it, you're going to encourage other students to try to be members of the Youth Commission as well. So, Mr. Rowan, I think you're going to talk about something?
Well, I tell you what, Ms. Corbett, thanks for introducing everybody to tonight. You know, I've gotten to attend a couple of, I guess, the first two meetings with you all, and I see the agenda you've put together. You've got a lot of work ahead of you. I've got full confidence that you're going to be able to accomplish your goals this year. A lot of good work here, schedule lined up, and looking forward to working with all of y'all throughout the semester. Looking forward to it.
Thank you.
Anybody wants to comment? If not, thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Tom's going to speak. Tom.
I thought you said, oh, sorry.
Yeah, I just want to thank you for stepping up, okay? There's a couple of things that, and I'm going to be a little serious here. There's a couple of things that you will remember. One, you will remember this. You served in government, and the government is, you're actually part of the government now. You're the man, okay? So, if you're going to, you're going to have some trouble, someone with those tomatoes, you're it, okay? But you're representing our youth. So, it's about 13,000 young people that are going to our schools, maybe a little bit more. It's a serious job. We really like the input that comes from the Youth Commission. It helps us adjust our programs and policies, and I just want you to always remember that. And I've had years after, the folks who've served on the Commission, have gone to college, and have come back, and the first thing when they see me, they remind me that, hey, I served on the Youth Commission. And that's how important it is. An example of this is the trail that's coming out behind TAB High School, and all that development, not development, but all the planning for that park, okay? It came from students that had the idea of how to connect the schools between TAB High School, TAB Middle School, and Mount Vernon, and how people can be able to use this in the community, and it's going to be expanded further when the rest of the trails are done. So, great ideas. I'm looking forward to hearing from the Youth Commission. Thank you.
Thank you.
I just wanted to thank each of you for participating. A lot of you are returning for your second year, so congratulations, and thank you for the service. I had a chance on the weekend at the Yorktown events to actually stand with several of the members of the Fife and Drum, and they chewed my leg off on wanting a skate park. And the reason I bring that up is, your voice is important. It gives us direction in terms of where we need to put priorities in the county. We're not necessarily going to be able to do a skate park. I mean, we've debated that for years, but your voice is important, and it leads us to make those right decisions in terms of what do we want and what do we need, and I thank you for that.
Yeah, I'd like to say thank you as well. We didn't have this group when I was coming through York High School, but it would have been nice to have had it back then. But this is a great opportunity for you guys and gals to step up and get some leadership skills under your belt. And one day, you may be sitting here, you may be sitting in Delegate Green's place, or Senator Diggs as well, if you have aspirations to do that. But this is a great start for you. Get your feet wet, get involved, get those ideas, you know, churning, and I really do appreciate you young people stepping up, because you're the future, and keep doing what you're doing. Thank you.
Thank you all very much.
Thank you.
Now, I'm going to go back to the service recognitions that I should have done beforehand. Chief Baldwin, would you join me, please? For the, this is for Lieutenant Wayne C. Brown, Fire and Life Safety, but how many years? 30 years also. Okay.
Madam Chair, members of the Board, Mr. Bellamy, Mr. Hill, thank you for the opportunity to recognize and honor Lieutenant Brown's 30-year service to the department and to the community. My thanks to Lieutenant Brown's family for the continued support over the years, support of the department, and service to the community. His mother Emily, his wife Jen, daughter Mackenzie Michael, also deceased. Lieutenant Brown, come up, please. Lieutenant Brown joined the department in September 95, was promoted to Lieutenant in March of 2007, and is currently serving as the Lieutenant on B Shift at Station 6 and is part of our Marines in Response Team. They're good men.
I told her I wanted, if we could turn this into the Yorktown Onion, that's my favorite.
I've got to say, Wayne, 30 years is a milestone. That doesn't mean that's the end of the term. There's a few more years after that, and hope that you, and hope that you will stay, because we appreciate all the work that you've done, and we're looking forward to a few more years that you can enjoy, and we can enjoy you. So, let's get our picture taken. Congratulations. Sheriff Montgomery, I think we have somebody who's 25 years.
Good evening, Madam Chairman, members of the Board. It's my distinct privilege tonight to introduce to you Brian Harmon. He has just recently completed 25 years of service with York County. He started here in September of 2000. For the first 23 years, he worked for the county with the Public Information Officer and was a videographer with them. Two years ago, in 2023, I was privileged to have him join the Sheriff's Office, and he's my main videographer now, and in the shows like Not in York County, News from the Sheriff, some of the most recent ones, Move Over Mondays, were productions that were put together by Brian. He's done an outstanding job. Prior to coming here, he actually worked for Wavy for three years, so I guess that's where he got some of his great experience with. And he's joined tonight by his wife, Deidre, so congratulations for 25 years of service, Brian Harmon. Thank you very much.
Brian has been marvelous. Stayed for, let's see, at least 15 more years.
I'll give it my best shot.
Let's see, so, yeah, where am I? Where am I? Right here. This one. Okay. Tonight, we have several, we've had several presentations, and we still have a few more to go. The next one on the list will be the Virginia Innovation Partnership Corporation Drone Presentation, and I'll call on Chris Sadler. Nice to see you, Chris.
Yes, ma'am.
Director of VIPC, Public Safety Innovation Center.
Yes, ma'am. See if I can get this pulled up here. And there we go. All right, so, Madam Chair, members of the Board, Mr. Bellamy, Mr. Hill, thank you for allowing us to come out today and speak about a really cool project that we're rolling out across the Commonwealth, and we're asking York County to help us in what we're doing. My name is Chris Sadler. I didn't know that I'd be back in this building after retiring four years ago from the county, but here I am. Actually, this is my second time in two weeks. I was here speaking with the Economic Development Authority two weeks ago. With me today, I've got Scott Denny. He is the Program Manager for Advanced Air Mobility for the Department of Aviation. So, what we want to talk about today is advanced air mobility, and how York County can help the Commonwealth prepare for the future of airspace. So, who is the Virginia Innovation Partnership Authority? I think it's important to lay that out first. We're actually the nonprofit arm of the Virginia Innovation Partnership Authority. So, we were created in 1985 to help the Commonwealth support and expedite new technology entrepreneurs, the young thinkers coming out of universities and Institute of Higher Education with great ideas, and help to get them their ideas to commercialization in the hopes that we create great high-paying jobs, create businesses, and draw other businesses and other entrepreneurs to Virginia. We do that through providing grants, investment opportunities, subject matter expertise for their ideas, networking promotions, all those kind of things that we can do to help make them successful, because ultimately that makes the Commonwealth and our locality successful. So, future of low-level airspace is what we're talking about. And I put the little picture of the George Jetsmobile in here for, I know the young ones have left, but I think most of us in here kind of know what we're talking about there. But essentially, we're talking about the airspace below 1,000 feet or so. That is what's happening across the country right now. When you look at the top three pictures there, you're looking at UPS, FedEx, and Amazon. Those are actual vehicles that they're using right now, prototyping and trying to figure this out. The vehicle on the right-hand side, the yellow and white aircraft, is an advanced air mobility vehicle. It's a ultra-short and takeoff/landing vehicle, electric short takeoff and landing vehicle. This is actually a monastus company, right here in Virginia. They're one of the leaders in this airspace right now. What you're seeing is an electric hybrid aircraft, so eight battery-powered engines fed by a jet turbine engine that just charges the batteries and allows them to fly. The bottom two pictures on the left are drones as first responders. That's actually Chula Vista, California. They were the godfathers, if you will, of the drones as first responder program. This is essentially the ability to send a drone out ahead of or at the same time as law enforcement, or even fire rescue, to get eyes from above, situational awareness, provide medical care, deliver, you know, things like Narcan, or tourniquets, or those kind of things. So, the Commonwealth is invested in this quite substantially. They've provided $1 million this year to the Virginia Department of Aviation and Virginia Innovation Partnership Corporation to figure out the low-level airspace and how we're going to be able to make this happen. So, the FAA has to agree to the safety cases to allow things to fly that low, and how is all that going to work, right? How are the streets of the air going to be able to allow that to happen, and not conflict these unmanned systems, or even some of the manned smaller systems? How are they not going to conflict with manned aviation and each other? So, they've given us $1 million to figure this out. With this $1 million, we've set up a test site at the Stafford Regional Airport. That's where we're placing all kinds of sensors to detect the airspace. We've got, I think it's five different Virginia vendors that are working with us with their software and other provisions to crunch all these things together and provide the safety cases we need to go to FAA and say, this is how we think we can make this happen. To do that, we need to install sensors all around Virginia to make this happen. So, what we're doing is, we're installing these sensors in Stafford. We're also creating a corridor that's going to go from Stafford around Quantico to the Warrenton-Falkir County Airport, and then up to Winchester. It's about a 70-mile trek to allow long-distance beyond visual line of sight drone operations to happen. We're also wanting to expand into the Hampton Roads area for several different reasons. Northern Virginia has complicated airspace because of the federal restricted zone up there, but Hampton Roads, right here in York County, Hampton, Newport, New East Park, has some of the most restricted airspace in the country, with Langley Air Force Base, the Naval Weapons Station, Fort Eustis, Norfolk International, Norfolk Navy Base. You can, it's hard to throw a baseball and not be in somebody's controlled airspace in Hampton Roads. So, this is a perfect place. If we can make it happen here, we can make it happen anywhere. So, these are the sensors that we're looking to install. They're simply set up on tripods, plug them into a wall outlet, and provide internet connectivity to it. That's what we need. These sensors will provide the detect-and-avoid capabilities to allow things like drones as first responder for the Sheriff's Office and the Fire Department to use. It'll allow things like package delivery from Walmarts, and from Amazon, and FedEx, and those kind of things to happen. It'll allow things like the real estate photographers that take pictures of the homes that are for sale, all those kind of things that you can think of. The power line inspections. Right now, I can't count how many times I could walk out of the office on Goodwin Neck Road in the parking lot, and there's a helicopter flying the power lines to do their inspections that they're required to do. I think it's weekly or biweekly. It could all be done by drone, saving millions of dollars, not having to put a person in the air, those kind of things. So, I'm going to let Scott talk a little bit about kind of the commercialization and some other parts of what our project is entail.
Sure. Thank you. Thank you, Chris. Madam Chair, members of the Board, again, my name is Scott Denny. I am with the Virginia Department of Aviation. I'm the Advanced Air Mobility Program Manager. We are working in conjunction with VIPC on several pilot projects. The slide you see right now is one of them, as Chris touched on. It is what we call the Stafford-Warrenton-Winchester Corridor. We are actively participating in installing sensors in and around the Stafford Regional Airport to do those tests that Chris was referencing. Our intent is to make this information public to the FAA, share this information with the FAA, and allow them to move forward with what they call Part 108 Adoption, which is the Beyond Visual Line of Sight Operations of Drones. That is one of the two projects that we are working. Another one is out in southwest Virginia, the aircraft that Chris pointed out, the Electra aircraft. Those are more of the people movers, and we're working on that project with Virginia Tech and the Mid-Atlantic Aviation Partnership. Why are we doing all these things? Well, one, traditionally, the Department of Aviation has historically dealt with infrastructure at our 65 public-use airports. Technology is here whether we like it or not, and we have to integrate these new technologies into the national airspace system. So, we are conducting these tests in hope of taking advantage of these new technologies and hopefully bringing this economic development here to the Commonwealth. Okay, so, we see several use opportunities here. First is drones as first responder, medical delivery, and Chris will touch on one of the projects that we have already accomplished a little here in just a moment. Disaster recovery, infrastructure inspections, from the state perspective, bridge inspections, road inspections, countless opportunities, and commercial operations. So, we, again, we see the future package delivery with the Walmarts and Amazons. It's coming. Basically, we have a mandate from FAA to review what is called Recommended Part 108, which covers this Beyond Visual Line of Sight rules and regulations. So, technically, within the next 240 days, we really expect feedback from the FAA as to how these things are going to work. So, with that, switch that back over to Chris.
Virginia is really being recognized as a leader in this space. Other states are following what we're doing. The FAA is watching what we're doing. In fact, Scott and I, and a group of others, went and met with the person at the FAA that's in charge of advanced air mobility a couple of months ago, and they were extremely excited about what we're doing. It's groundbreaking technology, and they're looking for other states to follow what we're doing. In fact, Pennsylvania, Oklahoma, Texas, California, and Ohio are very close behind us in what we're doing, using our bumps and bruises that we're accumulating along the way as learning tools for their operations. as learning tools for their operations. So, one of the projects that we're involved with, we provided, VIPC provided startup funding. We provided $75,000 for a project that Riverside Healthcare came to us with. Virginia Institute of Spaceflight and Autonomy based at ODU, Drone Up of Virginia Beach, internationally-known drone company, Eastern Shore, Akimak County Planning District Commission, and others. Riverside has the issue with Tangier Island, and not being able to get, you know, pharmaceuticals that they don't have at their clinic there, maybe lab work that needs to get done, those kind of things. Depending on weather, it could take days for a ferry to get there, or an airplane to get in and out of there, just depending, right? We were able to prove the concept, provide this startup money that led to a $1.9 million grant that Akimak County got from the federal DOT to plan this out and do a proof of concept, and actually fly drones legally, with FAA's permission, all the waivers in place, from Riverside, Eastern Shore Memorial Hospital to Tangier Island. So, it's about a 13-minute flight, it's about 17 miles. We can get it there in 13 minutes and turn right back around, so less than 30 minutes. We can be over there, pick up whatever is needed, and bring it right back to the hospital to run labs. And then, whatever it turns out to be, if you have to send special medicine back, you can go right back. So, in theory, in a couple of hours, we can get done what could take days. Where this is important is, it was easier to do because we were doing it over water versus populated land. So, that enabled us to kind of do something that was not necessarily taboo, but it was not really being done yet. But where this proves out great for other parts of the Commonwealth is, you take some of the rural areas where it could take an ambulance somewhere to get 30 minutes to get to somebody in distress. You know, by the time the volunteers get to the Rescue Squad Building, get in the truck, go up the mountain, down the mountain, to the other side, it could be, you know, peril already happened, and it's irreversible. If we could send a drone out, maybe an automatic defibrillator, Narcan, EpiPen, a tourniquet, something like that, it could be life-changing. And this kind of stuff is what's going to lead the way to enable this to happen down the road. This is kind of what we're looking at, meeting with the sheriff and also with the city of Newport News. Newport News has already signed their MOU with us, and we're working to get these sensors ready to install in several areas for them, for their drones as first responder program. The circles you see in blue are kind of the areas that Newport News is looking at now. The yellow area down there is Huntington Ingalls. We've been working with them. We provided them some of our sensors to test out and to help with some of the problems they were having there for a while. They're looking to get their own, and when they do, we're hoping, in talks with them, they're going to be able to interface their data into our system to just make it, you know, bigger. The three red areas you see there are the areas that York County is looking at now. So, we would be setting up sensors in those areas specific to public safety, having the ability to fly drones out of line-of-sight for whatever purposes they need. Coming from my background in emergency management, another thing I really see advantageous for this is, York County is a waterfront community. 236 miles, if I remember right, of waterfront property. Pre-hurricane, pre-noreaster, to be able to fly a drone, essentially push the button and have it go do its thing and fly that, and then be able to do it after the storm, and be able to look and see what happened. Will help out with FEMA reporting, with damage assessment, all kind of things. Some of this technology, as we build it out and get the rest of the county, the rest of the state covered, will enable those kind of operations to happen. This is kind of the sensors and just a little bit different depiction of what we're looking at. The bigger blue circles you see with the grids in it are the actual airspaces, the controlled airspace areas that we're having to mitigate. So, you can see the complexity of where we're flying. Just as, for instance, the New Station 1, I still call it New Station 1. Station 1 has a ceiling of 150 feet right now. It's the highest they can fly in that parking lot there because of the grid that it's in for Newport News Meadburg Airport. With our sensors and things, and dealing with the FAA and dealing with the tower there, we're hoping to be able to get that increased so that they can have better situation awareness in and around those areas. So, we talked a little about drones as first responder. Really, the sensor layout that we're doing is foremost, and number one, is for the commercialization of the airspace, the advanced air mobility of the future. What I call a consequential benefit is the ability for drones as first responder to be able to do their thing. And the other thing is our partnership with Langley Air Force Base. So, we're working with Air Force Air Combat Command on the ability to share our data. We also have some DHS contract money that's been provided to us to figure out how to get data to the DOD in a secure way that they can accept it. We just can't send them a, you know, an email or tap into their network and send them data. It's all got to be configured and cyber-secured in a way that they can accept it. So, we have funding to be able to do that as well. And they're interested in what we're doing here in Hampton Roads because they can only look at what is inside their fence with their sensors, and what may happen to bleed over. They can't go and install sensors outside of their area. But if we're installing sensors outside the area for other purposes, and they can accept that feed, now their ability to protect their base and to look and see what's coming or going just exponentially gets bigger. So, this is a letter from Dr. John Mateus with Air Force Air Combat Command. He's very interested in what we're doing. We meet with him pretty regularly, and they're looking at what we're doing here in Hampton Roads as potentially being something, if successful, they can roll out to other areas where they have billions of dollars of aircraft sitting in the middle of an airstrip, you know, in jeopardy of maybe somebody flying over and doing something nefarious. So, that's all I have. I'm happy to entertain any questions, or if anybody has anything.
And I think there probably going to be some questions. Tom, do you want to start?
Yeah, just, with my background in aviation, one of the things I was kind of curious about, you talked about the drones and the need for higher levels. And you said 1,000 feet, that immediately kind of goes to the basic traffic pattern around an airport. And a lot of aviators in non-commercial, you know, that will fly sometimes down in the air. And they do just visual flights, but then, you know, VFR, but then you end up with, you know, the potential for collisions if you don't follow the rules. I mean...
So, when I say about 1,000 feet or below, 400 feet, 400 feet below is where your drones are allowed to fly, unless they have special waivers, which are hard to get, to be able to fly any higher than 400 feet. So, that area between, let's say, 400 and 1,000 feet is where I'm looking at those bigger vehicles, the airplane-looking vehicles, so the manned vehicles.
Okay, I mean, but, maybe I misunderstood, but the yellow aircraft, was that unmanned?
No, no, sir, sir.
Okay. I mean, I flew A-10s, and A-10s at 1,000 feet was high altitude. And so, you know, you're down at 250 feet or so, and...
And the sensors, the sensors we're using are, will be the ADS-B, so we'll be able to pick up squawking aircraft. Military aircraft, of course, is an issue we have to deal with. The other sensors we have are Remote ID, so it's picking up drones RF signals from the drones. And then, we also have an optical sensors that actually scan with high-power cameras and look for things in the air, use AI to determine if it's a bird, or an airplane, or whatever it is. And then, the flight software that these drones and other things we use in will de-conflict based on all that information.
So, is it, so, yeah, so that was a question, why are you doing this? In the sense that it's going to provide aviation rules and collision avoidance for various...
Yes, sir. So, our Stafford regional, our Stafford project that we spoke of earlier, it's analyzing that exact thing. So, we've installed sensors at two fire stations that kind of encircle Stafford Regional Airport, and we'll be operating drones in that vicinity. And we're doing it, first is a desktop exercise, and then an actual live-fly exercise. And we're doing that to analyze that exact issue that you're talking about, and studying that information and sharing that with FAA.
Okay, and so, for, and with what you're doing, how is that merging, it's going to have to merge some way, with the FAA rules? Like, I don't think they use the term anymore, Terps for the, you know, okay? So, the patterns and stuff like that. So, basically, you're going to be setting up the rules. Is this, like, right now, just the Wild West and low-altitude aviation, or what?
Not quite. So, there is several aspects of the project, right? So, the whole intent is a harmonious operation between two types of aircraft, right? Manned, traditional aircraft, and now the unmanned drones. So, we're analyzing that type of data right now, but it's all going to comply with existing FAA rules. And right now, FAA is analyzing what's called Part 108, which is the Beyond Visual Line-of-Sight Operation of these drones. So, once these rules come in line, everything that we are doing right now is geared to comply with both federal regulations and everything that's currently regarding traditional aviation operations.
Well, it sounds like it's, it sounds like a very exciting time for you guys, and I'll be interested to see how this works out.
Yes.
Thank you, Tom. Dwayne, did you see?
Yeah.
So, good to see you, Chris, and seeing you in a while. So, these sensors, how many of those would you need in this area? Have you figured all that stuff out? Have you gotten that far?
So, yes and no.
And how far apart are they?
We have a general idea of the sensors we're looking to place. And again, this is a research and development-type thing. So, we're going to put some sensors out there, and we're fairly confident what we're going to put out there is going to work. But we have the ability to, that was not doing what we thought it's going to do. It doesn't do what the manufacturer really said it was going to do, so we'll swap and put something else in. We know we're looking at right now the Remote ID, which is a requirement for all drones to have a device that can put out a signal that can be picked up by these Remote ID sensors. The other is an ADS-B N sensor, which essentially takes all of the squawking signals that are put out by manned aircraft, and will plot it on the map to tell us, "There's an airplane over here. It's coming, it's at this altitude," that type of thing. And then, a, what's called an Iris Cassia G, which is an optical. For lack of better terms, it looks like, well, it looks like a Martin Birdhouse to me. This device right here. This has six cameras on it, and it looks out, like I said, and tries to determine if it's a bird, if it's a plane, if it's a drone, that type of thing. It uses its AI algorithms to determine that. And we'll plot that again on the map so that you can see it on the map, but also, the data will be taken from our systems and go into the flight software so that the drone that's leaving, you know, the Sheriff's Office to go out on a mission knows to go around this way, defer this way, watch out for that tower. And again, on our systems, it also has geographical problems, towers, guy wires, buildings, places you, it might not be illegal to fly over, but you probably just shouldn't fly over it, like the Newport News Water Works, Virginia Power Distribution places, things of that nature.
So, these sensors, would you have to put them on, like, the cellular towers or something to get the visual that you would need?
What we're looking at doing now is pretty much what you see here. It'll be on a tripod-type system. There may be some, like the third one you see over there, that might need to attach to a pole. For instance, if we ended up putting one, let's say, at Station 4, that's all pitched roof. There's no flat roof to put this on. We may have to put something on the side of the building. We would work with General Services and all to figure it out.
But I guess it'd have to be higher than the trees, I guess, is what I'm saying.
Not necessarily. I mean, the higher, the better to an extent. But some of these are RF signals. The cameras certainly won't have to be higher than the trees.
Right.
So, we know the areas that are being considered for these operations. Once all the MOU gets approved and everything works out, we will actually have our contracting agency, ATA Aviation. They're actually doing this in multiple states, but they're a Virginia-based company right now. They will send their engineer out, and he will visit sites with us and the York County staff to determine, "No, this one won't work, this one really does work." And then, you know, IT can say, "Yes, I can get you, you know, connectivity there, and we can get you power if it's not already there." And we'll work all that out with them, develop an install plan to be approved by the county, and then start installing the equipment.
Yeah, I think it's exciting that, you know, right here in York County and in the tidewater area, that, you know, this is kind of like a pilot program. So, that's exciting to me. How does, like, something like Starlink play into this? Is that something that you could utilize?
So, yes and no. Probably not for this. Where we would use something like an LTE connection or a Starlink connection is an area that we cannot get internet connectivity. So, if we were in a rural area where they just don't have good internet, then we might would use Starlink to...
Doug's at Williamsburg.
Yeah, I know, right where he's at. Yeah, so, Starlink is being used. I think the county actually has Starlink on their drone trailer in case they go into an area that doesn't have it, or it's a major, you know, hurricane, or something that takes down our cellular connectivity.
Right, that's what I was thinking, more disaster.
Yeah, so, I think down the road, and I'm looking forward, you know, several years when this really starts getting operationalized and things, we're going to have to have a backup to the backup. And at that point, some of that infrastructure may be looked at. But right now, we're looking at just a plug-in internet connectivity, or an LTE card if we had to.
Okay, thank you.
I had two questions. I didn't see anywhere on your map where District 1 or the Williamsburg area is covered. Is that a future?
That's up to the sheriff and the fire chief. I do know that in James City County has, they're working with VCU Medical Center. They're also working with Duke Med and Forsyth County in North Carolina. They received a multimillion-dollar grant to plan out the use of drones to deliver automatic defibrillators. And we're working with them, just had some conversations with them last week, to talk about the sensor needs that they're going to need to be able to have that work, and the ability for them to work with us to plan that out. And when they build their sensor network, that it ties into the same Virginia project. And, I mean, we all know how the upper end of the county is. If James City's putting stuff up in James City, it probably will have a lot of bleed over into York County. So, I think it's really smart to kind of wait a little bit. They're using grant money to do theirs. Let's let them plan theirs out, and then we maybe can just fill in a few holes that theirs doesn't cover, and have the whole upper end of the county covered.
And that's actually part of the rationale for Newport News as well, because we do have some of that overlap. So, from a Virginia perspective, it would be nice to have the entire state eventually covered.
Eventually, yeah. One other point with the data. All this data is feeding into, it's called the Virginia FIX System, the Virginia Flight Information Exchange System. It's a dashboard kind of system that will take all the sensors, everything up in Virginia, to allow the flight planning stuff to take place. This is owned by the Commonwealth of Virginia Department of Transportation. So, all this data that we're compiling is authoritative data owned by the Department of Aviation.
And one other question. I think fixed-wing aircraft do a pretty good job of staying 1,000 feet and above. Helicopters don't, particularly in my area. And I guess that would be a concern, that how are you protecting against low-flying helicopters?
Actually, yeah, so Chris touched on it, the Virginia Information, Virginia FIX, is what we call Flight Information Exchange. If you think of it as a, instead of a traffic management system, it's a traffic advisory system. So, it lets individuals know who's operating where. So, it gives pilots both on the ground and in the air situational awareness.
The optical camera is going to play the biggest part in that. I mean, I, we know all well, I was part of the drone program here, and we do a lot of flying in Seaford at the fire station there. And I swear, I think they deliver mail from Fort Story to Fort Eustis about 10 times a day by low-flying helicopters that fly over at 400, 500, 600 feet. As well as the Cessnas, just doing touch-and-goes, fly right over top of Back Creek and back over, and none of them are squawking. So, we can't pick them up by, same problem they had up at Dulles with the helicopter-airplane crash. They were not squawking, so they couldn't be seen. It's the same problem we have here. That's why the Iris Cassia G, the optical system, is very important with what we're doing. We can't rely on one detector to provide what we need to. We have an assembly of different detectors that all detect different ways, so that if one doesn't pick it up, hopefully, these other two do. And the optical camera is just for that reason, is for the low-flying things.
Daytime-only, though.
It's daytime-only. It has some nighttime capabilities. It's not, we're not going to get three and four miles with it, but we'll get maybe a mile. But the other good part of this is, there's current ways that the drones can still fly at nighttime beyond what this can see, as long as they're doing it at like 200 feet, so right above the tree lines.
Thank you. Mr. Rowan has some questions for you as well.
Yes, ma'am.
So, thank you for the presentation. Very interesting. I'm going to ask that you please keep us up to speed with the program as it moves forward. This is a type of tip-of-the-spear technology development. I want to see York County very much involved in this, as much as we can. I'm also interested in the potential economic opportunities as new business could come in to support this program specifically, or the industry as a whole, developing drone, developing drone parts, software development, the whole nine yards. Like to see what opportunities we have there. You mentioned manned drones. Are you talking about remotely manned drones, or are you talking about in-the-cockpit drones?
So, I'm talking about...
Are there drones, is someone in that?
I'm talking about the three aircraft you see in the middle. The yellow one on the far-right inside, and those other two are currently manned.
So, people, somebody in the cockpit?
Yes.
Flying in, okay, all right.
So, the aircraft, the yellow one there, is just a two-seater aircraft right now. They're working on, is it a nine-seater?
Nine-seater.
It's a nine-seater. The cool thing about that one is, it takes off and lands at half a football field.
I swear, it looks like an AI-generated picture with those little tiny propellers, but...
I blew it up, so it's a little pixelated, but, no, I was just at Virginia Tech a couple months ago, Scott and I, and they actually flew that in, and it lands, and I kid you not, at half a football field. 120, 150 feet, 19 knots, it comes... and they actually flew that in and it lands and I kid you not, a half a football field, 120, 150 feet, 19 knots it comes in and just.
Is, is, is there any part of the program looking at how this technology can be used over the water? Emergency response, search and rescue, marine research and so forth. And we talked about how it flew over across the Bay of Tangiers Island in the back. That's great, but there's a whole lot of water right there. York River, James River, Chesapeake Bay and so forth. Um, we, what you won't have, or maybe you will have, those sensors that there as well. What's, what's the footprint for the water look like?
So, there's, there's lots of really cool things that we're looking at drones and particularly the bomb, beyond visual line of sight capability for the drones to do over water. We were just, I, I get to do some really cool stuff. Um, a company came to us the other day that has a AI tool that can look at down to a pixel to help look for somebody. They have their algorithms that, they know what a person looks like standing up, um, looking from straight down, all the different, you know, things to know whether it's a person in a garble of stuff. And they can find, they go down, when you fly, you can do, I think it was either 13 or 1800 acres an hour, they can search. And they look at the pixels, the AI looks at the pixels and says, here's where I think a person is. Here's where I think. They've asked us to work with them now and actually the county, some of the county drone guys were on the call with us. They've asked us to help them study how this would work over water. So, you take up somebody that fell off a boat, scallop boat out in the bay coming in or whatever it is, we hope to be able to send a drone out of, out of line of sight, you know, five miles out and start searching for that person using the AI to be able to detect them.
So, what's your ask of New York County?
My ask for New York County right this minute is to allow us, uh, allow the county minister here to work with us on the MOU to allow us to install these sensors on county buildings.
Okay, all right, good. Thank you.
Thank you very much. It's been a fascinating presentation, I can tell you. A lot for us to think about. Thank you for the work that you've been doing.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you.
Thank you. Next on the agenda is the tourism events for the holiday season. It doesn't seem possible that Christmas is around the corner. We haven't even had Halloween yet.
Good evening, Chairman Noel, members of the board, Mr. Bellamy, Mr. Hill. My name is Alicia Taylor and I am the Waterfront Operations Specialist. Joining me tonight is Kevin Ritchie, Event Manager. Thank you for allowing us to join you this evening. York County Economic and Tourism Development, along with our community partners, we'd like to provide a brief update on our event successes and upcoming events and programs. So, we've had a very busy October with the return of our fall festivals and our themed markets. The lineup kicked off with the new two-day Yorktown Wine and Oyster Festival on October 4th and 5th, which featured wineries from around the state, a craft beer garden, live entertainment, food trucks and artisan vendors. Guests enjoyed oysters prepared a variety of ways to include raw, roasted and steamed. The festival also featured an oyster shuck-off competition, which allowed participants to go head-to-head and showcase their skills and speed. The festival is presented in a partnership with the Virginia Oyster Trail, Tidewater Oyster Gardeners Association and the Virginia Institute of Marine Science. Our next themed market was the Fall Festival, which featured vendors, a pumpkin patch, pumpkin decorating contest, face painters and a balloon artist and much more. Coming up this Saturday, we do have our Paws at the River Market. This event provides visitors with free pet portraits and an opportunity to participate in our annual pet parade. Additionally, kids can trick-or-treat at various businesses in historic Yorktown. Following that to round out October, we do have the return to the Yorktown Rudder Front on Sunday, Yorktoberfest. So, the York County Chamber of Commerce will host the Yorktoberfest, which will feature many local businesses, local breweries, entertainment and food trucks. Wait, there's more. So, in November, kicking off on November 1st, we have the Vintage Market, which returns to the Mac on Saturday, November 1st with antiques, folk art, a classic car show, food trucks and live entertainment. Our two-day Maritime Festival, which is Saturday, November 8th and Sunday, November 9th, will feature a workboat exhibition on the Riverwalk Landing Piers and we will also have a pirate encampment, maritime history display in the Freight Shed, a reenactment of the Yorktown Tea Party and more. To wrap up our fall-themed markets, we have the Harvest Festival on November 15th, where visitors can come and enjoy a hayride, a walk through a hay maze, take the Virginia, uh, take in the Virginia Living Museum Animal Show at the Freight Shed and even test their skills with an inflatable axe-throwing activity. Now, on September 20th, the Colonial National Historical Park, in partnership with WHRO Public Media, York County, the Jamestown Yorktown Foundation and the VA 250 Commission invited the public to a special screening of the new Ken Burns documentary, The American Revolution, on the Yorktown Battlefield. This unique experience featured a never-before-seen excerpts from the soon-to-be-released film showcasing pivotal moments from the Siege of Yorktown, a defining event in America's his, uh, fight for independence, before an audience of more than 7,500 attendees. The event featured performances from the Old Guard, the Fife and Drum of Yorktown and additional enhancements of artillery demonstrations, revolutionary spy games, living history encampments and a 250-year canvas paint mural and more. So, as you can see, we have had a very busy, action-packed fall season, but there is still more to come with the holiday season right around the corner. Public Works crews will soon be preparing the town for the holiday season with the installation of greenery and ribbons on the light poles. They will also install the Yorktown Christmas Tree at the waterfront. The tree stands 24 feet tall and serves as a clear indicator that the holiday season has officially started here in New Yorktown. Now, I will pass it along to Kevin and he will fill you in on all the family-friendly holiday events that we have scheduled for Yorktown this season.
Thank you, Alicia. If you guys will indulge me, I'd like to get in the holiday spirit, if that's okay. Wouldn't be the holidays without Kevin wearing his Christmas hat, all right? All right. So, the upcoming holiday events, um, the holiday event season in Yorktown will kick off with the annual Christmas Tree Lighting Ceremony, the community, a community tradition sponsored by the York County Historical Committee. This year, the event features performances by elementary school choirs, which will be followed by the procession of lights down to the Yorktown waterfront led by the Fives and Drums of Yorktown. At the waterfront, there'll be a musical performance followed by the official lighting of the Yorktown Christmas Tree. At the Freight Shed, visitors can create a holiday card to service members or write a letter to Santa. You may even, I even spot a special guest down there at the waterfront if we can break him away from the North Pole. The following day kicks off our two-day Christmas Market on Main. This two-day event features more than 80 vendors, including artists, food vendors and special holiday gift offerings. In addition to the vendors, there'll be Australian entertainment, ice carving demonstrations, blacksmith, colonial ornament making and much more. On Saturday, visitors can take advantage of a photo opportunity with Santa on Main Street with York County's old 55 Dodge Vintage Fire Truck. On Saturday evening, a crowd favorite returns to Yorktown with the Lighted Boat Parade. The event is sponsored by the Lighted Boat Parade Committee of the Yorktown Foundation and is a big undertaking. We're so thankful for all the volunteers and the community organizations that pull off this very special Yorktown tradition. Families can enjoy cider, hot cocoa provided by the local Boy Scout group, enjoy fire pits to warm up and take in Australian entertainment that will be provided that evening. The parade starts at 7:00 PM. However, we recommend guests arrive early to dine at Yorktown Waterfront Restaurants or visit one of the site food vendors for this very popular event. In conjunction with the second day of Christmas Market on Main, Cookies with Santa will take place on Sunday, December 7th at York Hall. This event is free and is sponsored by the Gallery at York Hall and all its volunteers that make this event happen. Kids will be able to visit Santa, take a picture, drop off their Christmas wish list for delivery to the North Pole. Parents can shop the gallery for unique gifts made by local and regional artists. We're excited once again to welcome everyone to the magical night of an enchanted evening on Main Street. This evening, guests can experience a nativity scene with live animals, ice carving demonstration, chestnut roasting, Australian entertainment and make and take kids' craft and seasonal vendors. This will be a special evening on Main Street that will be lined with luminaries, cressets and braziers to light up Main Street. We have some new enhance, event enhancements that are sure to make this a great holiday event this year. Last but certainly not least, kids can visit with Santa at York Hall while the adults shop for unique Christmas gifts in the gallery. Our final holiday-themed, uh, event will be the Mistletoe Market held down at the waterfront. Families can enjoy live music from Center Stage Academy and take the opportunity to shop one of the, um, holiday gifts that'll be, um, on display. The market is passed with, packed with holiday-themed fun. Freight Shed families will visit Santa and can see a model train demo as well set up in the Freight Shed. Speaking of trains, families can ride the Free Polar Express that will be set up at the waterfront and march in the Toyland Parade. Additionally, there'll be kids' crafts, colonial ornament making and an ice carving demonstration as well for families. Also in December, there are a few community partner events that are free to York County citizens. Christmas Tide in Virginia at the American Revolution Museum, learn about colonial holiday traditions both indoor and outdoor. And the Rees Across America event sponsored by the Yorktown Chief Petty Officers Association and the Colonial National Historical Park. The goal is to place a wreath on each grave at the Yorktown National Cemetery. You can volunteer your time or donate money to purchase a wreath. Again, this year, due to the increase in popularity and attendance, York County Economic and Tourism Development staff had part, have partnered with the National Park Service to help bring this event to the public. Now, I'm gonna pass the presentation back to Alicia to talk about VA 250 events, information and upcoming events in 2026.
So, as part of our ongoing collaboration with localities and nonprofits across the state such as Jamestown Yorktown Foundation, Colonial National Historical Park, Waterman's Museum, Colonial Seaport Foundation and more to celebrate major milestones in Virginia and the nation's history. And to align with the 250th anniversary of the founding of our great nation, the semi-quintcentennial in 2031, a formal request has been submitted to the United States Navy to consider a commission, a new USS Yorktown. This initiative would honor Yorktown's legacy as the site of America's victory in 1781. So, mark your calendars. In 2026, we have a great lineup ahead with an enhanced Fourth of July and then two lights for tomorrow that happens on July 3rd, 2026. We also have planned Victory Weekend, which includes our Victory Market, Yorktown Day celebrations, live music and much more. Next, we have the Sail Yorktown Festival. So, embark on an unforgettable adventure at the Sail Yorktown, uh, Festival, an official Sail Virginia 2026 Affiliate Harbor Event on June 12th through 14th, 2026. Witness breathtaking tall ships to include the Godspeed, Luna, Pictoon Castle and our homeported tall ships, Schooner Alliance II and Schooner Serenity. The festival will feature educational exhibits, historical interpretations and community partnerships. We will pay tribute to America's and Yorktown's rich history and heritage during this once-in-a-lifetime event. The event will span across all of historic Yorktown, including but not limited to Riverwalk Landing, Yorktown Waterfront, the Yorktown Battlefield Visitor Center, Readouts 9 and 10, The Moore House, Historic Main Street and American Revolution Museum at Yorktown. So, before we wrap up, I'd like to remind everybody to put some dates on your calendar. We do have our winter markets returning to the waterfront on Saturdays, February 14th and 28th and March 14th and 28th. Then get ready because we have the York County Restaurant Week happening February 20th through March 1st, 2026. This is a great opportunity to support your local restaurants, delicious meals and enjoy some special deals. As always, more information about all the wonderful events and much more can be found on our website at www dot visityorktown dot org or through one of our various social media platforms. Thank you for the opportunity to present York County Economic and Tourism Development along with our community partners. Consider it a great honor to be a part of making the holiday season special here in Yorktown. So, we look forward to seeing you all and your families down at the upcoming events.
Thank you both so very much, but thanks to all the staff that have been working on this. This is chock-a-block full and if anybody is bored, there's something wrong. There's something for everybody to do regardless of your age and I hope that people will pay attention and when they look at this and mark off exactly what they wanna come and see. Because, as I said, there's so much there over such a long period of time. That's what makes the waterfront so exciting and jumping with people and it's always good to see everybody down there, especially when you, you all work so hard to make it a wonderful place to visit. So, I can't thank you all enough. And if anybody else in the board would like to say something?
Oh, I remembered everything.
Go ahead.
I'm gonna say real quick, I don't know if there's, I can't think of another community that chalk, that puts so many events successfully, weekend after weekend, that this team does here in New York County to provide opportunities for any number of, of our citizens and guests to, to enjoy. And I'd be curious if there's a way to track to see if there's anybody among us who can attend all in a given season and then maybe a meta-achievement of attending all in a given year and give those people special recognition for attending all our, all of our events. I don't think it's possible because I think we got too much, but it'd be interesting to see anybody who wants to step up, step up to the challenge.
I'd take exception to that. Kevin's at every single one of them.
Did you wanna say something?
Yeah, great job. I mean, we're, we are chock-a-block full of entertainment and things to do, so keep up the great work. Thank you.
Thank you so much. It is a, uh, team effort and, uh, it wouldn't happen without the whole team. So, I thank you for.
You're right, it's a team effort and that's what makes this place so special. And it's going to be a wonderful, wonderful time and we've just got Halloween coming up. Can you imagine what's going to go on after that? So, thank you all. Appreciate your time and your efforts.
And speaking of the team, I wanna say also, thank you for your efforts to scramble at the last minute, basically, and have something of a Yorktown Day celebration in place even with the government shutdown making very little bit possible what we normally do. So, thanks for scrambling.
Thank you, sir.
Steve, Stephen beat me to the punch.
Normally at this time, we would, we would start the public hearings, but I know that there are citizens who are sitting out here and we need to recognize the ones who would like to speak. I, the first one I have is Pam Pushow. Pam, are you here? Okay. Come forward, name and address, please. Three minutes. I'll be, go ahead.
My name is Pam Pushow. I reside at 103 Kimberly Court, 23692. Trump is a convicted felon, fraudster, sexual assaulter, extortionist, pathological lying, misogynistic sociopath and a malignant narcissist. He promised to be a dictator on day one and said, I am your retribution. He is destroying our democracy, rule of law and the Constitution. His sadistic revenge tour is spawning heart-stopping fear to anyone who refuses to bow down in fealty. He is destroying anything that benefits a blue state or democratic-created program. As a white supremacist, he's ordered the destruction of warehouses full of food and medical supplies in Africa rather than benefit people in what he calls shit-hole countries. Only white immigrants from South Africa can enter the US. At his direction, red states are gerrymandering districts to suppress the black vote. A Homeland Security ad says, "Defend your culture. No undergraduate degree required, $50,000 signing bonus." The goal is to create a white supremacist, undereducated thug army. Alligator Auschwitz has disappeared, 1,000 migrants. Our cities are being invaded by the military and ISIS zip-tying four-year-olds and placing them in U-Hauls segregated by race. I attended the peaceful No Kings Day in Williamsburg where 6,000 voters participated. Newport News had over 1,000. Many were York County residents. Not one of us was Hamas or Antifa terrorist, an illegal alien, a violent criminal or were paid to be there. On Truth Social, Trump posted an AI-generated video of himself wearing a crown and a. On Truth Social, Trump posted an AI-generated video of himself wearing a crown in a fighter jet and releasing feces onto No Kings Day protesters. Posted on an official White House X account were paintings of Trump and Vance wearing crowns, sitting on thrones, and below them, Hakeem Jeffries and Chuck Schumer in sombreros. Where is your indignation? Want to judge someone's character? See if they would rather spend $200 million on a ballroom or on pediatric cancer trials. Cancer research and M-NRA vaccine development were cut by $500 million. Trump gave $40 billion to Argentina to prop up their failing economy, resulting in their cancellation of tariffs on soybeans to China, causing U.S. farmers to lose 100% of sales to China. Canceling USAID and SNAP benefits also harms our farmers. Disabled children are being denied assistance. 38,000 manufacturing jobs have been lost since January. When insurrectionists yell, "Hang Mike Pence," Trump said, "Maybe Mike deserved it." Trump said, "Empathy is toxic and dangerous as hell." Trump is suppressing freedom of speech involving universities, museums, folk education, media, and law firms. Trump and his family are taking foreign bribes. Trump is ensuring the Epstein files are not released. Rob Whitman endorses these actions by his silence, so this board is also compliant. Not one of you has spoken out on how all of this and more is affecting the very survival of our nation and community. It is only a matter of time before every one of us is affected by this chaos. Thank you.
Next person I have to speak is Andrew Gilder. Your name and address, please. You've got three minutes.
Hi, my name is Andrew Gibler. I'm at 406 Gainesway here in Yorktown. I am definitely not as prepared as the last speaker. In fact, I didn't prepare anything at all. But I counted to come and talk to you about a couple of surveys that had gone out recently regarding the Parks and Rec Department and a lot of the options that were presented in there. I am the Hampton BMX president of the nonprofit organization that's been in Hampton since 1979. We've been doing a lot of good work. We bring a lot of joy to a lot of kids and to a lot of riders and parents and families around. In those surveys that you had, you had options for skate parks and pump tracks. Now, I heard your comment earlier, sir. I hope that I can change your mind here in a second. But when my son decided he wanted to start racing BMX, not being a part of that culture before, I was kind of nervous about the stereotypes that we were potentially getting into, right? The ones perpetuated by media, the BMXers, the skate park riders, not knowing what you're going to get. And what I found was the complete and total opposite. What I found was parents and families who came together, that gave the shirts off to backs, that spent time volunteering and donating everything they possibly could to good cause to give their children and families a place to ride for the kids who don't have the same opportunities in a standard stick-and-ball sport. That's what I see with options such as a skate park and a pump track. If you're not familiar with a pump track, I highly encourage you to become familiar with a pump track. It is an incredible thing. There's five pump tracks that I'm aware of right now being built in the state of Virginia all across. And if you build one right and you build one proper and you have it done by the right people, Yorktown can be on the national as well as the world stage. There are UCI World Championships that travel all around the country supporting these competitions, and it brings people together, and it's incredible to watch. I travel personally with my family every single weekend, but I don't travel here because the peninsula has nothing to offer for people who are involved in action sports and stuff that we enjoy. I go to Richmond, I spend hundreds of dollars. I go to Virginia Beach, I spend hundreds of dollars. But I don't do that here, and I came to Yorktown because of your schools and how lovely the community is and because I wanted to be here with my family. But I don't spend my money here because there's nothing to offer for people, families, and the kids like us. So those skate parks, those pump tracks, those opportunities, even a small one, if you could ever consider in the near future to bring something like that to York County, I think you would see benefits that you can't explain and I can't present to you here with a presentation or a bunch of information. That's all I have to say. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you very much. I have John Wiggins. Name and address, please. Three minutes.
I'm John Wiggins, 103 Park Lane, Seaford, Virginia. I want to echo everything that Andrew said. We actually met at the All Wheels Park in Sanson, Virginia and got together with similar interests. I'm also here with my children. My daughter's in the bath. Nope, she's here. Sorry. Caleb, you met Caleb at the Yorktown Day, Fysen Drum. So he's not a hoodlum skateboarder. He's a volunteer in our community. So being a family in this county, we appreciate the safety, the schools, and the nice things, but we've realized there's much to be desired for the parks and recreation. The MAC and other parks are great for baseball, soccer, now pickleball, but otherwise, residents have to travel to Newport News and other counties and all over for different parks and options. One missing park feature here is a safe and designated place for families to ride skateboards, scooters, and BMX bikes. I came to the Parks and Rec Advisory Board about four years ago to possibly make a change about that. The Prab heard me out, but they needed to know if it was just a limited interest. So the Prab conducted a survey in 2022 to find the countywide interest in a skate park. The Prab then summarized the results, and I'm not sure if those results ever made it to the supervisor level. Wayne, I gave you a copy, but I'm here now with the highlights. Of the 2,100 survey takers, which I hear is a huge turnout for any park survey, 90% supported or strongly supported the idea of a public skate park being built in the county. Some residents had concerns that could easily be mitigated with the right approach. Many were also interested in skate clinics and programs like available in other communities. Unlike the growing pickleball community that was allowed to play on tennis courts before they got their pickleball courts, the skateboard riders have no authorized park space to use. So that leads to trespassing and resorting to the streets, parking lots, or busy sidewalks. And that's dangerous, and that could be a liability for the county. There's a missed opportunity for families in our county as these sports are positive family activities. They're in the Olympics now. They get kids outside and off of screens. When the county decides to make its next significant investment, I encourage you to consider this kind of park. And these kind of parks have been a huge success in other communities just like ours. And there's grants. They're available. There's fundraising to pay for it. And I also understand that there's the Comprehensive Parks Plan going on now. And I'm confident that this type of park will align with those results as well, so thank you.
Thank you very much. The last one I have signed up is Mark Williams. Mr. Williams? Okay.
That would be me. I'll try to make it as brief as possible. I think I did it in 15 seconds last time. So Mark Williams, 513 Charles Road, although I may be at other residences at any given time. So find me where you can find me. This has been the most exciting board of supervisors meeting I have attended all year, more exciting than the budget meetings. And we owe that to all of you because you take your time to listen. A presentation from these gentlemen over here. Shepherd, did you ever think you'd live long enough to see what they're bringing to us? Sheila Knoll, I know you don't answer questions in a board of supervisors meeting, but wow, that's exciting stuff. In addition to all the antennas and the RF, just think of the side benefits. If you grow a garden, your tomatoes will taste better. Where we go from here, just as these people said, you know, one more thing to do. From us older generation, I'm not far behind you, Shepherd, just because I have a ponytail and you don't. We have to consider the options as to what's good as a whole. Like the children were saying, how do we unite this community and understand our differences and respect our differences so that we can be more civil to each other? This election season has really taken a toll on this country. And just as the Washington Commanders, or well, we can't say Redskins anymore, so Commanders, the BPC, and the Dallas Cowboys go at it head-to-head. It's just a competition, and at the end of it, you shake hands and say, "Good game." So I hope everybody that's watching, because half the people left here today, that we consider how we treat people. It's not what we do or say, it's how we make them feel. And at the end of the day, we're all York Countyans or Virginians or Americans. Civility has a lot to be offered and a lot to be desired. Anybody who wants to learn your history, I do have to correct myself. The one airport you did miss was the Patrick Henry International Airport. Not much flies out of there right now other than military aircraft. However, it is an important airport, and it goes back much further than an airport. I was a youth once, just like these kids over here, and you know, back in the day when we had funny hairdos and skateboarded on public streets. One time, we chose to go down the hill over here by across the street from the Hornby House, and you hit the concrete at the end, the curb, and you can dive out into the water. But we used to have deputies that would turn a blind eye to stuff like that. We're a little bit more lawful now. Sometimes you've got to let the youth be youth to have their freedom. As they burn up the energy like the dog that likes to chase the ball, you have less delinquency in the future. There was one other thing, if I can take an extra second. Back in the budget hearing cycles in March or April, apparently there were hot mics out here. And two of the board members, who I will not mention by name, but they're here tonight. It was disclosed that I am Batman. And the Australian Enquirer, and the BBC, and the TASS, and Zeshuang, and Out of China, they've all picked it up on the news cycle. Apparently, somebody took a photo of me with a deputy up at Heritage Square and posted that anonymously on Yorktown 411. So in the future, I'll have to become somebody other than the Batman. And I thank you for your time. I look forward to the next meeting. We have a lot of work to do. We've got 70 days to do it left in this year. Enjoy. Thank you.
I don't have anybody else signed up. Is there anybody who would care to address the board at this time? If not, I'll close the public hearing. And in deference to the board members, I'm going to take a five-minute break. And we're sorry that we're late with the public hearings. And we're sorry that we're late with the public hearings.
Okay. Ladies and gentlemen, the meeting is back in order, and we'll start the public hearings. I'm sorry for those who had to wait a little longer. The first one we have is application Riverside Heating and Air Conditioning. A proposed resolution R 25-148 to authorize a special use permit to establish a contractor's shop with outdoor exposed storage at 8529 George Washington Memorial Highway.
Good evening.
Yes. Good evening.
Back and clear.
All right. My name's Madison. I'm one of the planners in the department. All right, so this evening, this application submitted by Riverside Heating and Air Conditioning is a request for a special use permit to establish a contractor's shop with outdoor slash exposed storage at 8529 George Washington Memorial Highway. The subject property is located on Route 17 and is zone general business and is designated general business in the comprehensive plan. The site is bordered to the west and north by Edge Hill, which is zoned R 20 or medium density, single-family residential district. Immediately north of the subject property are two parcels with single-family homes across Cockleton Road. The easternmost dwelling is illegally non-conforming residential use on a parcel zone GB.
Good evening.
Yes. Good evening.
Back and clear.
All right. My name's Madison. I'm one of the planners in the department. All right, so this evening, this application submitted by Riverside Heating and Air Conditioning is a request for a special use permit to establish a contractor's shop with outdoor slash exposed storage at 8529 George Washington Memorial Highway. The subject property is located on Route 17 and is zone general business and is designated general business in the comprehensive plan. The site is bordered to the west and north by Edge Hill, which is zoned R 20 or medium density, single-family residential district. Immediately north of the subject property are two parcels with single-family homes across Cockleton Road. The easternmost dwelling is illegally non-conforming residential use on a parcel zone GB. And east across Route 17 is Yorktown Public Library and Service Master Restore, which is a restoration business. And to the south is Cliff's Tire and Auto Center. This is an auto repair garage business. So the applicant is requesting a reauthorization of a special use permit that was originally approved in 2022 for an HVAC contractor shop with outdoor storage. The proposal includes a 13,200-square-foot building with office and warehouse space to support daily operations, along with 6,000 square feet gravel laydown area enclosed by a privacy fence connected to the main structure. This is a photo rendering of the proposal. A site plan was submitted following the original SUP approval and was approved by Development Services on April 1, 2024, with building permits that were issued this past July. Land disturbance activity has already begun for the contractor shop, which is permitted by right. This SUP request applies only to the outdoor storage yard. The land use characteristics and considerations reviewed during the original SUP process remain unchanged, and as a result, many of the original conditions are carried forward into this new request. According to the approved site plan, the storage yard will be located to the rear of the proposed building and accessed through a 20-foot-wide gate on the building's left side facing Cockleton Road. An eight-foot-tall opaque fence screened with evergreen plantings is also proposed. Vehicular access to the site will be provided by two driveways connecting the parking area to Cockleton Road. The approved site plan shows both driveways measuring 35 feet and 33 feet wide, meet VDOT entrance standards, and are designed for two-way traffic. To prevent truck traffic from entering nearby residential areas, signage at each entrance will restrict left turns for trucks. And in accordance with the zoning ordinance requirements, a minimum of 12 parking spaces is required for the combined uses. The applicant's site plan provides 38 spaces in total, including two ADA-compliant spaces. Therefore, they exceed this requirement. According to the trip generation manual published by the Institute of Transportation Engineers, the proposed facility is expected to generate about 82.5 vehicle trips per weekday. And using VDOT's 2023 traffic data, staff does not expect any noticeable impacts on traffic in the residential area, since most vehicles traveling to the site would use the section of Cockleton Road between Route 17 and the business entrances. As for visual impacts, the zoning ordinance requires that outdoor storage yards for contractor shops be designed and located so as to minimize visual impacts on adjacent properties and public right-ofways. According to the approved site plan, the storage yard will be located behind the building, enclosed by opaque fencing at least eight feet tall and further screened by evergreen trees with full-to-the-ground branching planted outside the fence. The applicant has also confirmed that no stored materials will extend above the fence line, and staff has included a proposed condition of approval to reinforce this requirement. A 35-foot transitional buffer is required along the northern and western property lines where the site adjoins the R 20 district. To provide additional screening for homes across Cockleton Road, staff has recommended a conditioning requiring that the buffer plantings also extend along the property's full extent of the Cockleton Road frontage. The 35-foot buffer is reflected on the site plan and satisfies this approval condition. And lastly, because the property lies within the Route 17 corridor overlay district, the project is also subject to standards for building design, materials, and colors. And the updated renderings that were submitted and approved by Development Services improve upon the applicant's original 2022 submittal and comply with all of Route 17 overlay requirements. So here's actually a picture of one of those newly updated renderings. This is showing the perspective if you're on Cockleton Road, and it's the second entrance closest to the residential's. And this is a rendering showing a bird's-eye view from Route 17. If you're looking out from Route 17, this is what it would look like. So in conclusion, this application seeks reauthorization of a previously approved special use permit with no significant changes from the original approval. Staff does not anticipate impacts to existing traffic patterns in the residential areas. And the required buffering consisting of a 35-foot transitional buffer, opaque fencing, evergreen plantings, this will provide adequate screening to minimize impacts on adjacent residential properties. So due to these considerations and conclusions as noted, staff recommends approval of this application, subject to the conditions set forth in proposed resolution number R 25-148. And the planning commission voted six to zero for approval. Thank you for your attention. If you have any questions for me, I'm happy to answer them. The applicant is also here to answer.
Thank you, Madison. Madison, anybody have any questions?
I do.
Mm-hmm.
One here. Two here.
Go ahead.
Go ahead, Wade.
So I wasn't sure if I was clear. The fencing is going to be on Cockleton roadside, the fenced-in stone area, right?
Yes, part of it. Yeah, so to the very left behind the plantings, that is where the outside storage yard is going to be.
Well, I'm looking at it. It's on this side.
Yeah, to the right.
And that's Cockleton. So the fencing and the shrubs, the trees are going to be along this frontage and Cockleton? Or just the 17 frontage?
Sorry, can you repeat the question?
The shrub fencing to kind of block everything, the six-foot fencing, is that going to be along Cockleton as well as Route 17 side? Or just on Route 17 side?
No fencing is going to be on the Route 17 line. Let me get you a better...
I'm not seeing the picture well.
Bird's-eye view of it. Here we go. So if you're looking at this straight on, Cockleton Road is to the right, and the outside storage is, or sorry, to the left. And then the outside storage is to the right up there. So the second...
What's that road on that side?
That's Route 17.
Well, I thought this was facing Route 17 going this way.
No, going that way where the entrance is at, that's Cockleton Road. So there's two entrances on Cockleton Road, and then Route 17 is further out.
Okay. So you're showing trees on the back side and on the front side of the fencing, so I guess it's all the way around?
Correct.
Okay. That's just what I wanted to know. Thank you.
Yeah, of course.
Doug, you had a question?
Yeah, I did. The original application back in 2022 had several recommendations or requirements in the signed resolution, and a number of those have been dropped, particularly the one around large trucks not being able to enter on Edge Hill. And I questioned Mr. Bellamy yesterday why we had dropped that requirement since it was so pronounced, and the speakers that spoke that night were quite concerned about that. Could you comment on that, please?
Yeah, of course. Thank you for bringing that up. So in the approved site plan, there is signage for not allowing trucks to take a left turn to go into the residential areas. So, and Earl can correct me if I'm wrong. We thought because it is in the approved site plan and we referenced the site plan in these conditions of approval for the updated one, it covers that concern. However, we can certainly add the original wording, I believe is condition number six in the original one. We can include that language in there if...
As long as you feel it's covered. It was a key point from '22, and it was missing for me when I read through this briefing.
Yeah, of course.
Did you say that you wanted to add it?
Add it back.
No.
It was in the original.
Satisfied that if it's part of the approved site plan and it's now incorporated, then we've addressed it, but it was missing. There was no notice of it, and I felt it was a significant enough point from the previous resolution.
I will add to that. I did have a couple people contact me about those big trucks coming through Edge Hill. They're making a loop through there with the dump trucks and the larger tractor-trailers and stuff like that. So I don't know if that's something we need to reach out to the contractor and see if we can get that stopped.
Is that currently happening?
This was maybe six or eight weeks ago that they, maybe a month ago, I guess. So I would say it's probably still happening. I don't know. But we might ought to check on that.
All right, here.
Thank you.
Stephen, did you have something?
I'll just ask real quick. Mr. Rowe, you okay with everything that we've talked about, covered here tonight up to this point?
Yes, sir.
All right, so let's get you guys open and getting into business.
Okay, thank you.
Of course.
If there are any questions from board members, I'll open the public hearing. Is there anybody who would care to address the board? If not, what is the pleasure of the board? I'll close the public hearing. And what's the pleasure of the board? Would someone care to...
I'll move it.
Okay, Mr. Shepherd has moved Resolution R 25-148. I think that's the one, yes.
The one written on the agenda.
25-148.
The motion...
25-148? Come on, it's been moved.
Any comments? I did move it. Little call, please.
The motion made by Mr. Shepherd is to adopt the proposed ordinance 25-148 to approve the application as submitted. Mr. Holroyd?
Yes.
Mr. Drewery?
Yes.
Mr. Rome?
Yes.
Mr. Shepherd?
Yes.
And Mrs. Knoll?
Yes.
Motion carried five-zero.
Thank you. Okay, the next one that I have on the list is... Jeannie, you're going to do this one. This is the public hearing for proposed resolution R, you know, 25-149 regarding a special permit application for York, from Yorktown Guns and Ammunition.
Thank you. Good evening. This application submitted by Yorktown Guns and Ammo is a request for a special use permit to authorize firearm sales and service at 108 Hyde Lane, 2330 and 2334 George Washington Memorial Highway. Three parcels are subject to this special use permit application. The subject properties have a combined area of approximately two acres. All three parcels are zone general business and designated general business in the comprehensive plan. To the north is Hyde Lane, which is a private drive. To the east and south is English Motors Junkyard. George Washington Memorial Highway bounds the properties to the west with Leonard Truck Outfitters at the southwest corner of the intersection, Walmart at the northwest corner, and Walgreens at the northeast corner. Existing development on two of these parcels includes a military surplus retail store and a portion of the parking lot at 2330 George Washington Memorial Highway, as well as a caretaker's unit and the remainder of the parking lot at 108 Hyde Lane. The third parcel, 2334 George Washington Memorial Highway, is undeveloped. The applicant is seeking authorization to sell and service firearms from an existing 5,000-square-foot retail store, which he already owns and operates under the name of Little G.I. Joe's Military Surplus. No changes to the subject property or structure are proposed. According to Section 24.1-306, Category 10, Number 20, a special use permit is required for firearm sales and service in the general business or GB zoning district. The applicant currently engages in the sale, service, transfer, and assembly of firearms and the sale of ammunition from said location. The applicant obtained a business license from the county's Commissioner of the Revenue in May of 2024 for retail sales of apparel, hunting, camping, and ammo. During the same month, the business also obtained a federal firearms license, an FFL, from the Bureau of Alcohol, Tobacco, Firearms, and Explosives, or ATF. There is no statewide licensing requirement for sales and service of firearms in Virginia. During an annual inspection conducted by the ATF in June of 2025, an investigator from the bureau contacted the planning division to determine whether zoning approval had been obtained for firearm sales. It was at this point that staff learned that the applicant was engaging in the sale and service of firearms without zoning approval. Approval of this application would bring the applicant into compliance with the zoning ordinance. A condition of approval has been proposed that would require the applicant to obtain a new business license that includes the sale and service of firearms. According to the applicant's narrative, the business secures its stock of firearms in locked gun cases using steel cables with padlocks and in two large safes. The narrative also indicates that the property is secured by an ADT security system and 12-ring cameras positioned both inside and outside the building. The applicant states in his narrative that he personally monitors the cameras 24 hours a day, seven days a week. During the site visit, staff noted bars on the windows and doors. The sheriff's office reviewed this application and indicated that they have no concern about the proposed use. The county's Department of Fire and Life Safety, or FLS, also reviewed the application and requested that the applicant be compelled to provide a hazardous materials management plan for approval. Per the Virginia Statewide Fire Prevention Code, the applicant will be required to submit to initial and annual fire inspections, which would be conducted by FLS staff. If any violations are discovered during the inspections, the business shall correct the violations within the time identified by the inspector. Letters were sent to adjacent property owners. Information about the application was posted to the county's website and emailed to those who signed up to receive notifications. And a notice sign was posted on the property. One email was received from a citizen who expressed concern regarding the security of the firearms after hours. She stated that guns should not be stored in glass cases, which can be smashed, and instead should be stored in gun safes when the business is closed. No additional public comments have been received as of today. The proposed firearm sales and service establishment would not have any adverse impacts on nearby businesses or properties, and the applicant's narrative captures the safety considerations he has in place to secure and monitor the onsite firearms. Approval of this application would bring the applicant into compliance. Therefore, based on the considerations and conclusions as noted, staff recommends approval of this application, subject to the conditions set forth in proposed resolution number R 25-149. The planning commission considered this application during its September 10 meeting and voted five to one to approve it as well. Thank you. I'm happy to answer any questions you might have, and the applicant is here to answer your questions as well.
Thank you, Jeannie. Does anybody have any questions?
Just for the applicant.
Would the applicant care to...
No.
Sorry. Go ahead. Wait a minute.
Ms. Carter, I'm not used to calling you that. I'm reading the analysis section of the package sent to us. It said, "Commissioner of Revenue issued the business license in May of '24 for retail sales of apparel, hunting, camping, and ammo, but firearm sales and service were specifically noted as not being included."
That's correct.
That's correct. But that same, very same month, he then applied to the ATF for exactly that requirement.
That's correct.
This is a lie. This is no right lie. I just, I get very upset when I find people trying to deviate around our business controls, around our planning controls, and only... and only getting caught because ATF did a proper job of inspecting a year later. That just, that gets up my craw. That is not the kind of business I want to be supporting in this town. That brings me to the second question. There is a hazardous material management plan requirement for opening up a gun shop in York County. Is that not required prior to the opening or prior to having the ammunition in place?
So, my understanding is that's not a requirement of the code. It's one that we got as a proposed condition of approval by sending this application to FLS for review. They requested that we include that in there just to be safe.
And it's also my understanding that after finding this violation in June of 2025, the applicant is still selling firearms in his store?
I believe so.
Thank you.
Thank you. If we don't have any more questions, would the applicant please step forward?
Yes.
Okay.
How you doing?
Mr. Shepherd?
Yeah, I wanted to try to understand how you approach this with selling guns in-
Well, we had spoke on the business license, and there was no mention of needing a special use permit to sell firearms.
Did you not talk to the, did you not, what I'm, what I'm, what I'm trying to get at here is I'm trying to understand how this has developed, okay? What did you not get provided that would have told you to get a business license for the use of weapons, to sell weapons?
What was I not provided?
Yeah. Why would you think that you could do that?
Why would I think I couldn't?
Right, without a special use permit.
I didn't know I would need a special use permit for retail sales.
Okay, so you just included the idea that you could sell weapons as just a normal retail-
Yeah, that's why the name on the business license says Yorktown Guns and Ammo. It wasn't misleading. It wasn't a lie.
It didn't say, okay, I'm sorry.
No, I'm referring to Mr. Douglas.
I'm asking, I'm asking the questions now. You can talk to him in a minute. So I'm just trying to understand how, I know the situation you're in there. I'm just trying to see what we, as the county, could have done in the situation like this. We, a lot of times, we find these kinds of things only by accident, or somebody complains. I mean, that's pretty much what our whole system's set up.
I was found by accident. It wasn't, they weren't there to do an inspection. They were doing a yearly audit, and I guess they notify the county when they're doing it. I have no idea. I've never been through it before. And I guess the county, something was brought that said, "We need a special use permit."
Well, that's ATF approaching the county, asking the question.
Yeah, and I think as far as the, also as far as the fire marshal or a fire inspector was there.
That's something, that's something, that's, yeah, I just, I-
There was no mention of a special use permit.
The problem like this, when you come before the board after the fact, it's never a good look, okay?
Yeah, I agree, but I could have also, I could have done it right then if I'd been told that I needed a special use permit. I would have done it right then.
You're not the only ones done this, okay?
Yeah, yeah. I've been there 43 years on that corner.
Yeah, I know. You've been there for a long time.
So, I mean, I've been there 43 years. So that's a long time.
I know. Okay, I'm just trying to understand why you didn't know this, or, I mean, I would not expect you to-
Never sold guns before. Well, my mother-in-law has a gun shop in Newport News, and they didn't require a special use permit there either. So it led me to believe-
Essentially, is that you said you were not aware that-
Yes, I was not aware, no. I've been selling, and I didn't get a license to sell ammo. I've been selling ammo. It doesn't require a special license to sell ammo.
Okay.
I've been selling gun parts and ammo for, since 2019.
So gun parts fall under the gun thing?
No, it doesn't. It's accessories. It's not parts. They're accessories, dress-up stuff, things like that.
Unless it's a serialized receiver.
Yeah, serialized, which is what fell under the FFL.
Okay.
Even when I did the FFL, they didn't mention that I needed, they didn't bring it to my attention I would need anything either.
Okay, so, kind of going to what Ms. Holroyd is probably going to talk to you about, but what's the, so knowing that you needed to have a business license to sell it, to sell guns, let's say after you've been told, okay?
Yes, I actually-
Why did you continue to sell weapons?
Well, because it didn't say that. It said, "If you want to continue to conduct business, you need to file for a special use permit."
Okay.
It did not say you need to terminate your business. I have two businesses in one location. I have the letter from zoning.
Okay, so you're saying that the letter itself did not-
No, it did not.
Say you had to cease and desist.
It said cease and desist if you're not going to request a special use permit.
Okay, so for the staff, I would think that that would be something we need to do in the future.
That was brought up also at the last meeting as well.
All right.
And the meeting clearly states, "Yorktown Guns and Ammo."
I do have one question.
On the business license, and nothing was brought to my attention at the time.
All right, got a question. All right, got it, got it. Okay, I need to go back on the slide. I want to see something, the picture of the store that they have in there. We're going to take, let's take a look at it real quick.
What can I pull up for you?
Yeah, I want you to find this, find the slide you showed with the picture, not that one.
You want to see a picture of the building?
The one of the street sign. Okay, stop right there. Okay, so, see this gun, ammo and guns?
Transfers.
Transfers?
Yeah.
That sign, is that a conforming sign to our business?
No, that's no longer there.
Okay, well, I just wanted, yeah, we do, we work real hard down there to try to start cleaning this place up.
There's a temporary permit right now for the banners.
There's a temporary permit for the banners currently, and those expire three or four months.
Okay, so you got, do you have kind of a pedestal sign somewhere there?
Well, actually, the main sign is being redone, but I didn't want to do it until I got the special use permit.
Okay.
Of course, it's faded on one side. The other side looks beautiful. But this side, apparently, the sun hits it all day, so, but yes, the signs are being redone.
Okay, great. That's all the question I have. Thank you.
Anybody else have a question?
But there was no option to mislead anybody about what I was doing.
Do you just do transfers, or you're selling firearms?
No, we sell. Well, because we're in the hunting and stuff like that, too, I get a lot of people.
I was just reading the signs. I couldn't tell if you were just doing transfers.
No, no, it was letting people know we were doing transfers.
So what I was getting out of the conversation is, I think there's a disconnect in the county processes between the different county departments, county staffs, planning and so forth, Commissioner of Revenues, Treasury Department. And hearing an applicant come in and say, "I need a business license for Yorktown Guns and Ammo", I would think that would trigger somebody to go, "Oh, Guns and Ammo, you're going to need a special use permit," or hand off to the right people. I think we got a procedural issue we probably need to take a little look at to see if we can tighten it up, and we had the same issue, I think, last public hearing with the lady that did the psychic reading. She was doing it, didn't realize she needed a special use permit for it because no one ever told her, so this is very similar, I think.
Yeah, there was no mention of it. I mean, the guns and the flare was there.
I'm glad that, once you learned, you submitted the special use permit, and we'll get that taken care of here tonight, and away we go. But like I said, I think we got to tighten some things up a little bit.
Of course, we're redoing the whole sign and all right now to make it, well, I was actually going to be moving down the street and rebuilding a new location, but of course, Publix was shot down on my property. I'm sure you all are aware of that.
The what?
The Publix grocery store and the big development that was being done. A lot of money was, and also, there's a lot of money invested in my business because of the guns.
Right.
But yeah, they're, they were going to develop all that, but I guess it can't be done now unless it's all retail.
All right, thanks, appreciate it.
Are there any more questions for the applicant? If not, thank you very much. I'll open the public hearing.
Thank you, too. And can I address Mr. Douglas?
I'm just kind of echoing what Stephen said. If there's a disconnect, are we addressing that disconnect?
So, we looked back at the business license that we issued to him when he applied, and at the bottom in big, bold letters, it said firearm sales are not allowed without a special use permit. It did say that. It specifically said that. It specifically listed the things that Jeannie commented at the very beginning of this, that he was allowed to do ammo and retail and things of that nature, but firearm sales were not allowed without ASUPO, specifically listed on the business license that he received.
It says that?
It does, yes. We're happy to provide you another copy if you'd like, but it did say that. And it was in very big letters, and it was actually in purple, so it was completely different color than was even on the, you know, the black and white form. So it was a disconnect. Usually when ATF issues, they call us to ask, and in this situation, they issued without checking with us, too. So there was a couple misses there, but our form specifically said, "No firearm sales is allowed without special use permits." So I don't know if there's a disconnect there. Maybe there's just something that maybe needs to be pointed out further, but there, I mean, it's specifically on the business license, it's not allowed.
And, good, I'm glad that's captured. The documentation's there. And maybe what we're learning here, what we learned from the issue last week with the lady with the psychic reading establishment, maybe that's a gentle, hey, by the way, you also go need a special use permit to kind of help people. Man's trying to stand up a business, keep a business running, he's focused on that, and maybe not the minutia that we're focusing on to get things running. So at the end of the day, I don't think any harm or any foul has happened here. He has a business license, he's paying taxes on it and so forth. We just need to check off this box here and do the public hearing properly like we need to. We're taking care of that tonight. So again, as best we can help out, we'll help out.
We'll continue to make sure we're placing that information on there in a bold format.
It just wasn't pointed out. I didn't notice it. And today, looking at it in the frame on the wall, I don't see it.
Okay, thank you.
So I guess my next question is, have we addressed this with ATF?
Oh, I mean, this was a truly odd situation because we have always, ATF has always called us to ask this question if the person who was getting an FFL had a permit. I mean, you've seen them come before you all. No one has ever really come before you that has one already in place. This was really an odd situation. And we're not sure what happened there, but when they re-audited this year is when it was noticed by them that there was no zoning sign-off. And I don't know if it was a different agent or who it was, but yes, we work very closely with ATF anytime this happens, and so-
It was only brought to light because the original ATF license said sells and manufacture. Well, their idea of manufacturing is putting a tire on a wheel. So if you put two pieces together, they call that manufacture. So they called the county to see if we were zoned for manufacture. Of course, I don't do manufacturing, but because the license said that, apparently, they had to contact the county to make sure we were zoned for manufacture.
But I'm saying, did you talk to the ATF to say, "Hey, what happened here?"
We asked the question, but we didn't get an answer. I mean, they just, they missed it last year when they authorized it. That's what they told us.
They needed to copy the license before they issued the FFL.
But we do continue to have very tight relationships with the ATF agents in this region. And they, like I said, they usually call us before they issue one. Yep.
Well, had they caught it, then we wouldn't be sitting here, probably.
That is correct.
Having this discussion.
Yes, sir. Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Earl, before you leave, I have one question.
Yes, sir.
On the management plan, what is the timeline for having it submitted and approved?
So if you approve it tonight, he would need to submit it as soon as possible. I mean, he can't start the, I mean, he really shouldn't start the, you know, keep moving forward without those things in place, without those conditions of approval in place.
So do I lock up the guns in the meantime?
You could require that. I mean-
That would certainly get his interest in getting it submitted.
The hazardous management plan?
I'm concerned that this was found in June. He went to the Planning Commission in September. We're still sitting here and no management plan.
I mean, you could always add a date to the resolution if you'd like to say, well, you know, he has to have it to us by the end of the month or tomorrow, whatever you want to put in there.
I would add the resolution that he cannot continue to sell guns until he has it submitted.
That's fine. That could be something you add to the resolution.
May I say something? I was told, I was told by the fire marshal or who did the inspection, I didn't need one because I wasn't selling black powder.
You're on thin ice.
Thank you very much. I'll open the public hearing, as I said before. Is there anybody who'd care to address this issue? If not, I'll close the public hearing. And what is the pleasure of the board?
Madam Chair, I would like to propose that we add a change to the resolution. So it would be Resolution R. 25-149 with a condition that gun sales must be suspended until the hazardous management plan has been submitted and approved.
How does the board feel? How do you feel on that? You agree?
It's entirely within the purview of the board to put a reasonable condition on the special use permit, if you deem it appropriate.
All right, I'm asking the board members, how do you feel about adding that to the-
What exactly do you want to add?
That we would suspend the current sale of guns and ammo until such time as the hazardous management plan has been submitted and approved.
Is the hazardous management plan required for firearm sales or for ammo sales?
It's required for-
For ammo or firearms?
It's firearms.
Hazardous management for firearms? They're made of steel and wood. I'm not sure what the hazardous material is. Hey, Chief, can we get the chief up, Madam Chair?
I believe the requirement for the sup was for hazardous materials management plan, which is standard language for the sups we see come across based on the type of occupancy and the type of business. Firearms in themselves does not require hazardous materials management plan. The storage of certain materials that go with it, if they were selling black powder, those type of items, ammunition in itself does not require hazardous materials management plan. Town Chief Kugliamo and Captain Edwards had reviewed this previously with zoning and planning. And I've visited the site recently, and there were several corrections were required, and I believe they've been completed, talking to Town Chief Kugliamo earlier this evening. But for a set for firearms only, hazardous materials management plan would not be required. If they were storing black powder and other agents involved with the manufacturing of, or loading of rounds, those type of things, and they don't do that based on what the fire marshal's offices reported.
All right, so is a, is that plan required for the special use permit? It is. But what does it cover, then, based on what the chief just said? I'm confused.
Basically, they went out to do a review. It's a recommendation that's in the sups. They went out, our folks went out and did the review, and based on the business that's being conducted at the site, it wasn't, is not required. If they were changing it-
The hazardous is not required.
It is not required for what they're currently doing, selling firearms right now. If they would change that to sell supplies or start reloading, and again, as I understand it, that's a different ATF regulation because of that, and the storage of those explosive materials require hazardous materials management plan.
Okay, so no hazardous. Okay, so it's just the guns, they're not hazardous management. There's no hazardous material.
The ammo itself is not considered a hazardous material.
Okay.
I withdraw the, I withdraw the-
Okay, we need some clarification. That was good. Thanks.
Where are we?
We're seeking a motion.
All right, I'll move R. 25-149.
A little call, please.
The motion made by Mr. Roan is to adopt proposed Resolution R. 25-149 to approve the application as submitted. Mr. Drury?
Yes.
Mr. Roan?
Yes.
Mr. Shepherd?
Yes.
Mr. Holroyd?
No.
Mrs. Knoll?
I didn't get a chance to speak before, but clearly, you have to read licenses when you get them, and you have to obey by them, so I'm voting no.
Motion carried three, two.
Okay. Let's see, the next one we have, item number eight, is special exception application from Dr. Joel Cheek. Jeannie, you have this one, too.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you. This application, submitted by Dr. Joel Cheek, is a request to authorize land disturbance within the 35-foot greenbelt buffer along the frontage of 121 Hampton Highway for the purpose of constructing a new drive aisle to the rear of the site to renovate the parking area. Encroachments into the greenbelt require authorization from the Board of Supervisors. The subject property has an area of approximately six tenths of an acre. It's zoned LB for limited business and designated limited business in the comprehensive plan. To the immediate north is a dentist's office. To the south is a non-conforming single-family home. To the east is an undeveloped flag lot, and to the west, across Hampton Highway, is a pool supply store. The zoning ordinance states that any modification of a greenbelt buffer must preserve the, I'm sorry, excuse me, skipped one. The applicant plans to install a new drive aisle to the rear of the property where 14 new parking spaces will be placed behind the building. The zoning ordinance designates Hampton Highway as a greenbelt road along which a landscaped buffer at least 35 feet in width is required. The greenbelt buffer must be left in an undisturbed, natural state unless the board authorizes clearing or development within it. Due to the parcel's shape and the building's location- Due to the parcel's shape and the building's location, the applicant is requesting to place the new drive aisle in the green belt buffer. And the zoning ordinance states that any modification of a green belt buffer must preserve the feeling and sense of natural character as it currently exists. Furthermore, it states in the event the board approves disturbance of a green belt buffer, it may require the area to be re-landscaped. The parking lot in front of the building was originally approved in 1995 prior to the adoption of the green belt buffer requirement along Hampton Highway. So, the green belt area on the subject property is currently under vegetated. A condition of approval has been included in the proposed resolution requiring the applicant to install landscaping that meets the planting requirements of Section 24.1-245 if the application is approved. It's not uncommon for business owners to express concerns about landscaping requirements that reduce their business's visibility from the road. In this case, however, the applicant is seeking not to improve its visibility, but rather to expand the parking lot and due to the limited size of the parcel, requires the drive aisle to the proposed parking area to be located in the green belt. While the area of disturbance is sizable, it should be noted that since the site was initially developed prior to the green belt buffer requirement along Hampton Highway, this property, along with several of its neighbors, was initially devoid of the buffer and thus the encroachment is not expected to create a major visual impact. The proposed condition of approval to replant the green belt buffer would prove a betterment to the current landscaping. Therefore, staff recommends approval of proposed resolution number R-25-150. I also wanted to let you know that, that we received a call from the dentist's office next door to the subject property saying that they oppose the removal of any trees. Thank you. I'm happy to answer any questions you might have and the applicant is here to answer your questions as well.
Any other board members?
So, are they going to remove trees? Is there trees there to be removed?
No. No.
Okay, so that was, okay, so no trees being removed. Now, this house, this was a house at one time, right?
That's correct.
I mean, it looks like it was a house and it's been converted to a business, right?
That's correct.
Okay, and this is, it's zone, zone GB, right?
Yes.
Okay. And up and down is, up and down Hampton Highway. This is Hampton Highway, right?
Yes.
Okay, I want to make sure I'm writing that on 17 all of a sudden. We had several businesses, including this county has put in a library and a few other businesses along the way. And in the process, we've, we've modified the green belt. Some cases, we've eliminated trees and stuff like that. So, the big thing here is he just needs the road to be able to get around to the back of his property to build more driveway, right?
Yes.
So, that little green area is all he's doing to disturb the, and I assumed at one time, when it was a house, it was nothing but lawn anyway.
This green area indicates the green belt buffer.
I know, I, I understand that.
Yeah, not, not the area of disturbance.
What I'm saying, there's a time when common sense has got to dictate here. I understand what we got to go through because we created this buffer, it's kind of, to have a buffer to kind of, to give us a view of woods or some sense of greenery and things like that. But there's times when we just, we have to mess with the green belt buffer, okay? All right, so you clarified everything I need to know. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Anybody else have any questions?
Yes.
Yes.
So, that picture there, go back to the other picture. Right there. Are, they crate myrtles there on the right?
Yeah, this, this photo was taken about a month ago by me.
Okay.
This aerial that you're seeing here is, was taken in 2021.
So, it looks like those crate myrtles, myrtles are in that drive path, are they not?
In, in the drive path? It looks like.
It looks like they're in the drive path to me.
It looks like they may be.
Well.
It might be a question for the applicant.
Yeah, I was going to say, you just said there was no trees being removed and the adjacent property was upset about that or didn't want us to approve it because of that. So, you know, if that's one of their issues, we need to figure that out because it looks like there's trees in that where I'm seeing it.
I don't know if they've been removed since that, since he, I asked him about, there's some shrubs that you'll see on the left side of that parking area. I asked him about that and he said that they were removed before he bought the property. So, this aerial was taken well before.
Maybe the applicant can answer that question.
Yep.
Ms. Carter, there, there's no possibility of putting the drive, the driveway down the opposite side of the building? It's inadequate space.
It appears that here on the left side of the property, it would be, the space between the property line and the building looks very narrow. I would imagine too narrow to allow a car to pass through.
Your photo of the, of the, of the house appeared to have sufficient space there.
I believe that the property line, you can't see it in that photo, but they can't build a driveway on the neighboring property, so that's why.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Do you have questions?
For the applicant, sir.
The applicant care to step forward?
Hi, I'm Dr. Joel Cheek. You had a question, what questions for me?
So, you're looking at a 14-slot parking?
Essentially, yeah. So, when we, when I purchased the property, the previous chiropractor that worked there lived on one side and worked out of half of it. So, he had, he already had it divided. When we purchased the property, we wanted to renovate the entire building and make the entire thing an office. The requirement is that for every exam room we have, we're required to have two parking spaces plus some for square footage, which means we need a minimum of 16 parking spaces based on the square footage and exam rooms in the building.
Okay, that, that answers why you're spending parking. Okay, all right, thank you.
Yeah, my question was the trees. Are there trees going to be removed?
So, in the picture, the crate myrtle you're looking at is actually in front of the property line and so, oh, that went too far. I was going to show you here. The, there. So, if you look at where the parcel 121, that's the dentist's office. He was the one who was asking about trees being removed because there are trees right along his property line that are not being moved. From the back corner of our building to his property line is about seven and a half to 10 feet depending on, at its closest. And on the other side, we have 20 feet from the front where the yellow driveway is going to be to the Mr. Leon who lives next to us. That's where the crate myrtles run along the property line there. The, the crate myrtles will actually be, we might have, based on that property line, there is one crate myrtle next to Mr. Leon that would have to be removed possibly, but it looks like we could just go between them, which is what we wanted to do. And then the crate myrtle in front is actually in front of the, where we're putting the disturbance.
Okay, so you're saying it's possible that one, it's possible that one tree might be removed?
So, yeah, if you look at the crate myrtles running along the side, those are actually, the first one that you can see is in front of where we're trying to disturb and the other one is actually further back. So, the, when you actually put it in there, it doesn't look like we'll have to remove them based on the way we drew it out. On the other side, I believe the dentist was worried about the trees that are between us and him on that far side.
Which you're not, you're not messing with that side.
Which we're not touching with that at all.
So, it was the one on this side that was concerned about removing trees?
Yeah.
Not the one on that side?
Correct.
Okay.
I have a question about the number of parking spaces. Are they, are they required, required to have that number of parking spaces or do you need that number of parking spaces?
A little of.
Oh. Yes, they are required to have that number of parking spaces.
It would seem to me that we need to rethink our parking spaces that we require because it looks to me that you would never fill all those parking spaces at once.
Well.
As a max.
Currently, in the, we have seven parking spaces immediately and one of the other dentist's concern, the dentist's other concern is that when we get busy, our patients will park in his lot and walk over. Because we are, like, I can't hire a massage therapist right now. I can't hire, like, to work in my office. I can't, there's a lot, I have hiring constraints. So, when I have, I currently have three employees with me and we have to park on the, like, figure out what we're going to do for parking because when you only have seven spots and right now I'm, yeah.
So, what, so what you're telling me is yes, you do need that number of parking spaces?
Essentially, yeah.
Okay.
Because he's got, he's got employees and now he's looking to hire more.
Yeah.
So, he'll probably wrap up. Six or seven parking spaces with employees.
Right.
We were concerned that there might have been a miscommunication, so that number is required for his expansion, that number of parking spaces.
Yeah.
Those wouldn't be required if he doesn't expand his business.
And your hiring constraints is because you can't open those offices up because you don't have parking to accommodate those offices.
And also just business rules constraints. I am limited to the number of patients I'm able to see right now just based on people getting in and out of our office.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Absolutely.
If nobody has any more questions for him, I will open the public hearing. Is there anybody who'd care to speak to this? Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing. And what is the pleasure of the board?
I think it was R-25-150. I believe that's the one, right?
Yeah.
I'll move it. Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
Roll call, please.
The motion made by Mr. Shepherd is to adopt proposed Resolution 25-150 to authorize a special exception for land disturbance at 121 Hampton Highway. Mr. Roan?
Yes.
Mr. Shepherd?
Yes.
Mr. Holroyd?
Yes.
Mr. Drury?
Yes.
And Mrs. Knoll?
Yes.
Motion carried five to zero.
Thank you very much. Now, we'll go to item number nine, which is, it's the fourth public hearing, request for tax exemption for CDR, Child Development Resources, and our attorney's going to handle this, I believe. Mr. Hill?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Briefly, the, the issue here is covered in the, in the memo that was in the board material. This is the property located at 312 Waller Mill Road, or that's the subject of this application, that has been owned by various nonprofits for a number of years. Most recently, Robinson Community Partnership, Inc., and they sold the property to Child Development Resources, Inc. And much like Robinson, CDR is now here in front of the Board of Supervisors requesting that this board grant a tax exemption for the property and also that the board agree to abate the taxes. Currently, the amount that's listed in the memo is the amount of taxes that they have already paid from January 1st. The second half taxes, I understand, have not been paid because they're not due yet.
Okay.
And so, included in the material, as we have done in the past, my office, we have included a copy of the state ordinance, which sets forth the criteria that the board needs to consider when determining whether to grant the exemption. Just two things I'll highlight. One, it is not a mandatory exemption. It is at the option of the Board of Supervisors. And the list of criteria and things to consider is fairly broad and also includes any other criteria, facts, and circumstances that the governing body deems pertinent to the consideration. So, it's within the discretion and pleasure of the board as to whether to grant the exemption. And I believe Mr. Scott is here to.
I didn't see him.
Make his case on behalf of CDR.
Thank you very much. Paul?
Good evening, Madam Chair and members of the board. I'm here to represent Child Development Resources. We are about 11 weeks now away from hopefully opening and moving into that building. I think Mr. Holroyd's been able to go out and take a look at it under construction. I was just there today and progress is, is moving on at a pretty rapid rate. So, we just, any questions, I'm happy to take, but we're, we appreciate the support of the staff to get this in front of the board.
Thank you. Any questions? Yes, Tom?
Okay, so, in this 58.1 code, first paragraph, it says, and a quote, it's about halfway down, down the first paragraph, A, says, "Whose sole member is a nonprofit organization," your nonprofit, right?
Yes, sir.
Okay, "that uses such property for religious, charitable, patriotic, historical, benevolent culture, or public park and playground purposes," right?
Yes, sir.
So, is the property you got there being used for anything else?
Basically, just offices, meeting spaces, childcare, playgrounds, those kind of things. We offer a lot of services to the community similar to the prior applicant, so we'll have nursing visitations there as well. It's, it's all in line, consistent with the prior use of the property when it was the Community Services Coalition. So, there won't be anything outside of what that's described in that paragraph.
Okay, thank you.
Yes.
Paul, you certainly know my history and my, my concerns with, are we being, are we treating each fairly? Fish was moved out of the CDR building when it was still the Robinson building. They're, of course, paying property tax on the current place they're leasing plus a property that's under construction until they move into that building. So, why would I want to give you a tax relief when you haven't moved into the building yet? Because if I read the statute, it says you have to be operating in, basically have to be operating in the building as a nonprofit. I don't understand why we would be giving a rebate until your certificate of occupancy is achieved.
Still, it's a fair question. So, I would just, I would defer to the, the attorney's comment that it is that the discretion and pleasure of the board, whether they do that.
It's a question of fairness for me. Thank you.
Any other questions?
I have one for the county attorney. So, the request is to grant CDR tax exempt status of that property while they're using it, not tax exempt status of the property.
It's actually, it's actually the property. So, the use of the property, the property gets the real estate tax, the exemption is for the property for the real estate taxes and there's also additional taxes that flow with that, such as use taxes and things of that sort.
Right, for while CDR is using it for, as a nonprofit, if a, if in the future, CDR moves off and a for-profit organization comes on there, do we then have to grant it taxable status or does it?
No.
No, it would automatically, once the ownership changes, the property would automatically revert back to its status as taxable and then we would have to grant, if you chose to do so, that request again on a case-by-case basis.
All right. And if CDR uses the, or allows this part of the property to be used for another organization for reasons in the future that we don't know, would that change the taxable status of the usage then?
It might.
In which case, we need to come back here and talk about it.
Yes.
So, that was why I asked the question.
That's what I thought you were getting at, yeah.
Yeah, I was trying to find if it was, because you have multiple organizations coming in here. If any of them were for profit, I would have a problem.
Correct. In our, in our articles of incorporation, if CDR were to ever dissolve, there's triggers that, that would dissolve the assets and they would be transferred to the community organizations that we, we partner with now. One example would be the Williamsburg Community Foundation, there's others. So, we would, we would just dissolve and it would go back out into the community. As far as the property goes, that would be a decision again for the board to make.
Right, but to Mr. Shepherd's point, if you have an entity come on site and set up shop there that is for profit, then the entire site isn't being used for nonprofit anymore. We're going to need to evaluate what that means, the taxable status of that property.
Right, that would be fair. We have absolutely no plan at this point to have any kind of engagement like that.
Right.
Anybody else have a question? If not.
Right, I mean, I would note, Mr. Roan, and for the edification of the rest of the board, that the second to last paragraph of the proposed ordinance states that the continuation, the continuance of the real and personal property tax exemption is contingent on the continued use of the properties for charitable and benevolent purposes in accordance with the purposes for which this exemption is granted. So, should that cease to be the case at any time, the exemption would, could, would no longer apply to the property.
But it's, it, black and white, if it's either or, but if it's hybrid, that's when we'll probably need to put our heads together and figure out what we may or may not need to do, so. All right.
Okay, thank you. No more questions? I'll open the public hearing. Is there anyone who cares to speak to this issue? Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing. What is the pleasure of the board?
Okay, this is number 25-26. You want to move it?
Roll call, please.
The motion made by Mr. Shepherd is to adopt proposed ordinance number 25-26 granting number 25-26, granting tax exemption as requested. Mr. Shepherd?
Yes.
Mr. Holroyd?
No.
Mr. Drury?
Yes.
Mr. Roan?
Yes.
Mrs. Knoll?
Yes.
Motion carried four to zero.
Okay, thank you very much. And the final public hearing tonight is the Board of Equalization jurisdiction change, and I'm going to turn it over to the county attorney.
Mr. Hill, please.
Thank you, Madam Chair. The purpose of this ordinance is to make a change to, the county ordinance, to adopt a allowable provision of state law that would require owners of real property to first appeal their real estate assessments with the Board of Equalization before they can go to Circuit Court. The memo outlines sort of an explanation of how the process generally works. But for a little bit of additional background, ordinarily, we do our real estate reassessments biennially in York County. And so every two years, the assessor of real estate reevaluates and reassesses each piece of real property in the county. And after that process is complete, the state law and our rules require the value be set as of January 1st of that year. Following that, there is a period of time in which a taxpayer or a property owner can request that the assessor review the real estate tax value and make a determination as to whether or not the information presented by the taxpayer justifies making change to the assessment. Following that, the Board of Equalization meets for roughly a two-month period. And that Board of Equalization then looks at any requests that are filed by taxpayers. Taxpayers do not have to go to the assessor before they go to the Board of Equalization, although they usually do. And then following that, the normal process would be that a taxpayer could file an appeal in Circuit Court. Under current, as it currently stands, an aggrieved taxpayer in York County has essentially almost four years to file an appeal for tax dates going back as many as four years after the assessment is done. And in some cases, although rare, the county might be in a situation where somebody files a case in Circuit Court, and we don't, we didn't know there was an issue. They never brought it to our attention. They never gave us an opportunity to correct it or review it in the first instance. And many years later, the information might not be valid anymore. We may not have people working here anymore who were involved in the assessment and a variety of other things. So it does present some obligation on the taxpayer to be a little bit diligent in pursuing their remedies. But at the same time, it also, I think, provides an avenue for the county to have notice and remedy situations that need to be remedied and also to give us an opportunity to do that in a timely manner. So that's the explanation for what's being asked for.
Does anybody have any questions?
Certainly do.
I know you do. Go ahead.
Mr. Hill and I spent a good portion of the afternoon on the telephone. My issue is that we are, if you miss that two-month window of filing an appeal with Board of Equalization, you then cannot exercise your rights to go to Circuit Court and get it overturned. The next 22 months, you're locked until the next assessment comes along. That's how I'm reading this.
That's right.
And I just feel that you're denying people their rights to go to court if they have a grievance, and that's a problem for me. And I give you an example. I went back and did some homework this afternoon. There's a certain gentleman who owns a farm on Fenton Mill Road. And he also operates the same farm on Skiminal Road. It belongs to a different property owner. One is assessed at $15,000 an acre, and one is at $32,000 an acre. He went to the county assessor at the beginning of 2024 and challenged that number. And they made some corrections to it based on considering ravines that were on his property and reducing the total amount owing. But he is still more than double the same property that's across the road. He did not take it to the Board of Equalization because he felt that he had gone to the assessor and done everything he could. The assessor was wrong. She should have looked at fair market value. And fair market value in this case is the property immediately across the road that he's also farming. Why weren't they considered of equal value? Here he is, a year later, still addressing that issue. We're talking several tens of thousands of dollars' worth of additional taxes. And I see that kind of a problem getting caught in the loop. If you haven't addressed the issue within that first two months, he's now lost the opportunity to take it to Circuit Court. We've got several properties up in that Skiminal area that are a problem. We've had a couple of them come through already. One of them we're addressing in consent calendar tonight. I'm just, I'm opposed to a condition where you lose the right to go to Circuit Court if you have failed to exercise the right to go to the Equalization Board because you've had a discussion with the assessor.
Can I ask a question?
I
That goes along with that? If we pass this ordinance, and then they decided, screw you guys, I'm going to go to court anyway, would the court deny them the right for appeal based on the fact that you followed procedure?
Yes, that would be
Goes right to what he just said.
That would be the defense that would be asserted. I would just note that I, you know, all of those considerations are for the board to consider. The ordinance is being presented for your consideration as, I think, it is not without precedent. There are other examples, both in our code and in state law, where people have a narrow window of time or a window of time to assert their rights. And a classic example is zoning decisions. There's a very limited period of time in which you have to appeal those or you lose your right to file an appeal at all. So it's not without precedent. I, you know, I'm not going to, I'm not going to say one way or the other what
Could the ordinance be changed such that if the landowner addressed or approached both either or, the Board of Equalization or the county assessor during that two-month timeframe?
The, well, state law says you can require them to go to the Board of Equalization. It's silent as to the role of the assessor. However, I would note that, you know, there's really no, the amount of information that you have to present to the Board of Equalization is extremely minimal. You have to give the address of the property, the name of the owner, and you have to say, this is what I think the value should be. That's really all you have to do.
But the landowner typically doesn't know that.
Yeah, let me kind of add, again, I'm going to kind of add on to what you said. So if, I just heard you say that I get my letter, okay? And I call the assessor's office. It says you called the assessor's office to talk about it. That doesn't start your appeal process?
So the process is, and the notices that we send out would have, if this were to be adopted, the notices that we send out would have to be updated to advise all property owners that if you wish to preserve your right to contest your assessment in Circuit Court, you have to file with the Board of Equalization.
Well, see, that's the problem. Because, because for years, what we have done in this county is told people that if you call the assessor's office, in fact, they will push you off of going to Board of Zoning Appeal, or what is it? What is it? Board of
Board of Equalization.
God, I lost my brain here. So
I've done it many times, talking about this very ordinance.
So they push you off to not do that because, well, and then it gives you the impression that you have more time to respond.
Under current law, that's accurate because you don't have to go to the Board of Equalization as it currently exists. So
So what's pushing this?
It's a, it's a, it's a, it's a request that's being done in order to give the county the opportunity to be given advance notice of problems that may exist, and primarily larger taxpayers. I mean, a large commercial taxpayer could wait three years.
As they have.
That has significant, significant tax liability to the county and budgetary impact and could wait three years without ever bringing it to the county's attention.
In fairness, in fairness, let's give them a year. Does the law allow us to give them a year?
To give them a year to file with the Board of Equalization? You could do that, but that would, there's two problems with that. One, you would have to re, you'd have to re, you'd have to change the way that the Board of Equalization process works in York County, which you can do. The other problem is that there's budgetary, the reason why the Board of Equalization process is limited in time right now, the way it is, in any year is because there's budgetary impacts. You need to know what the results of all those decisions are while you're formulating your budget, so.
Could you change it from two months to three months or four months?
Mr. Hill, if I were to ask you to table this, would you be able to come up with a different recommendation for us?
I mean, I can do a variety of different things. I mean, I can, there's lots of different ways you can approach it. If you give guidance as to what it is that you would be looking for, I can certainly, I can certainly do that. Mrs. Knoll is talking about extending the time period. I mean, logically, you could, you could make the appeal deadline. That's set by state law, but it's pegged to the period that the assessor has. So you could say, give the assessor an additional month, so that period would run till the end of February, and then extend the Board of Equalization's period for a couple additional months, with the understanding that there may be situations where the Board of Equalization would not be able to finish its work in time prior to the finalization of the annual budget. The other possibility that might alleviate some of the concerns about going for 22 months would be to potentially, and I don't know whether you'd want to do this, but to require the Board of Equalization, and this is a fairly easy one that wouldn't require a significant change in the ordinance, to require the Board of Equalization to meet annually instead of semiannually. So then you could come to the Board of Equalization in the second year of the biannual and say, hey, I'm concerned that this is, that there's a problem with this. And then have them
My issue is, there's 14 properties in that Fenton Mill area that are 20 acres or greater. And the range of assessed value on those properties is from $10,300 to $70,270.
I can't speak to any of that. That's all within the purview of the assessor.
But that comes back to me, if there's an obvious error by the assessor, then does that not give the landowner the rights to take it to Circuit Court even though they've missed an equalization?
The, this would only apply to an appeal of a general reassessment. There are other procedures, but in order to file in Circuit Court, if there's a problem with the valuation of your general reassessment that the county sets, you would have to give the Board of Equalization an opportunity to review it before you extend it to Circuit Court.
I can't live with two months.
Well, see, that's what I'm thinking, I'm sorry. I was just saying a year, years, because what if we go to a different assessment cycle?
Yeah.
Okay, we go to a shorter assessment cycle. So, and that way, you don't end up with, you don't end up with assessments over assessments over assessment. So you give them, you give them one year. And if they can't get their act together in one year, then that's it.
I can certainly try to formulate a way to do a one-year period if that was something the board would like to consider.
What about this approach? Because I've been considering this, I've been trying to think, what problem are we trying to solve here? And I think you're starting to address that by some property owners of substance waiting two or three years, hitting the county with a question that's enough to move the needle as far as budgets are concerned. I don't think this really should apply to most properties in York County. I don't, it's not right that in this circumstance, recreate an ordinance that prohibits somebody's ability to seek judgment as an aggrieved party with the courts. The vast majority of property in York County. But I see the problem with what we're also addressing elsewhere. So instead of a time-based change, can we limit it to properties of a certain value or greater? Because below that, it's not going to move the needle enough. Above it, it does. Would it be legal to say, for properties of a value of X, whatever we decide X is, you have to follow this process because it has budgetary implications? Otherwise, we're not going to get in your way.
The answer to that, I believe, is no. However, it may be possible, and I can look, and I would need to do some digging and some research to see if it can be done by classification.
Classification. Right, and I would say just simply would be residential versus commercial.
Well, that, that may be possible.
That was my question. Can we break out commercial away from residential? Because how many of these do we have on an ongoing basis, would you say?
I can't speak to how many Board of Equalization appeals we have on an annual basis, but I mean, every two years. But let's say there's 15 to 20 or more. The vast majority of those are commercial and multifamily properties. Of those, since I've been here, we've had, I'm aware of five appeals to Circuit Court. All but one of those were the same property. One of them was a residential property that was based upon an assertion of a fair market value appraisal that was done after the relevant time period. I mean, there were some other issues in that case as well. But realistically, the part of the issue is that the assessment time period is January 1 of the year. There are ways the board can address that issue as well, which would be, you know, have annual assessments or other things. But realistically, the way the law is, is you assess your property based on the fair market value on January 1st. I mean, it may be that a year later, it is not the fair market value, but the law doesn't really, the law and the ability to have finality for the county does not really countenance every single time you believe that the value of your property has changed, being able to come in and say, I think it's done. I mean, you do it as of January 1st, and then the next two-year cycle as of January 1st. And the rules for that, of how assessments work, are very complicated. And we have real estate assessors and professionals who deal with that, but
Your professional opinion, then, you know, if you have a resident that's harping about an unfair assessment and wants to take it to court, isn't there a cost factor?
I mean, there is. It's, the vast majority of residential properties are not going to take it to court because the cost would exceed the amount of money that you're going to get.
I'm with Doug. I would say we can table it until you can come back. I really like breaking the commercial out versus the residential, and I think that's going to solve some of the problem.
By classification.
By classification.
Multi-family, commercial
Right, correct.
versus single-family residential. I'll look and see whether that's possible. It may not be, but I'll look.
I'd like to explore that, yeah.
Okay.
Do we have a motion?
A motion to table?
Roll call, please.
Do we need a date on that? Do we need to table to such and such a date?
60 days.
I would add, well, I would recommend, if there is, if there is an interest in doing this, that it be done before the end of the year so that it would go into effect for the next year. So I would recommend continuing the public hearing until, I guess we're back. Second meeting in November would be the next meeting, and see if we can come up with something that'll
Does that give you time?
That gives you time.
Okay.
Okay.
Good.
The motion made by Mr. Holroyd is to continue this public hearing for proposed ordinance 25-27, amending York County Code, Chapter 21, to November 20th. Mr. Holroyd?
Yes.
Mr. Drury?
Yes.
Mr. Roan?
Yes.
Mr. Shepherd?
Yes.
Mrs. Knoll?
Uh, yes.
Motion carried.
Thank you very much. County administrator reports.
Thank you, Mrs. Knoll. I have nothing for you at the moment. If you have questions, be happy to answer those.
Okay, thank you. Matters presented by the board, would you like to, or do you want to do that?
Yeah, go ahead, yes, I do want to do it.
I figured you did, go for it.
Because this is principally for, you know, people outside that are watching this and anybody that's interested. But I really wanted to get to the board. There's a couple of things. The, you know, Greg Gruetendorf works on the HR PDC staff, okay? And I, and so I've known him for years, and I'm over there with, and Sheila's our representative, but I'm over there with the TPO and a bunch of other organizations. And I asked him, I said, I want to kind of get a sense of how we are doing. And what I'm looking at, I'm just going to read you this, this is something you don't have. You can have it if you want and make copies of it. But it talks about trends, and the trends affect us. And like, for example, the GDP right now, and this says of October, is trending up, okay? Which is, you know, okay, cool, that's good. Retail sales in Hampton Roads are trending down. Now, you're going to hear this up and down thing, and you're going to have to, in your mind, put it, what kind of sense is this making? And Virginia's going up, but here, retail sales are going down. Hotel revenue, for example, in Virginia and here, are going up. But that's always a big thing because we got most of the hotels in the historical triangle area. The seasonal, for employment, seasonal payroll, okay, has been going up. But the five-year adjusted is going down. But the five-year adjusted is going down. I'm not sure what I can get out of that, but in Hampton Roads, the trend is up. Virginia's up, the United States is up, okay, for employment. The civilian labor force, then, you look at that, where the labor force is going down, employed going down, unemployed is going up. So basically, the jobs are kind of shrinking out there, and we've been, we've been seeing this for a while. Unemployment rate in Hampton Roads is going down. The unemployment rate, the unemployed, okay, is going down. In Virginia, it's staying level, in the United States, unemployment is going up. So in this particular case, we're doing, we're doing better. Unemployment claims in both Hampton Roads and Virginia are going up. Growth in industry, anybody want to care to guess at what's, what's the best growth in industry? If you drive down the road, you go to old, you go to supermarkets, you go down to Seventeen, what do you see? The hospitals have taken over all the empty spaces. So it's healthcare and social services are the number one business growth in, in our, our area. The one that's failing is manufacturing. Building permits are going down, residential homes sold are going down. Thirty-year fixed mortgage rates average is actually going down, okay, which is a good sign. National economy, it says, in the second quarter of this year, inflation-adjusted GDP rose at an annual rate of about three point eight percent. This is a sharp rebound from the contraction of the GDP in previous quarters. Growth continues, but is decelerated. The unemployment rate has edged higher since twenty twenty-three, reflecting job market that is slow to hire. Hampton Roads economy, the, the region is feeling slowdown more acutely. Retail sales fell three percent year-over-year in July, and it's slipped modestly month-to-month for most of the summer, that's retail sales. Adjusted for inflation, spending remains above pre-pandemic levels, but growth has flattened. So, you know, the adjusted for inflation part on the, on the growth is, is kind of just leveling out. The labor force has now declined for seven consecutive months, okay? It's down one point seven percent from last year. The pullback may partially reflect the ongoing federal cutbacks, which continue to weigh heavily on local employment, because why? We got a bunch of employees, federal employees here, right? The unemployment rate dipped slightly in August to three point seven, but remained higher than it was the start of the year. Since January, Hampton Roads unemployment rate has risen point four percent points, percentage points, compared to point three percentage points nationally. Adjusted, let's see, that was on the board, okay, housing and real estate. The housing market continues to show, to show signs of cooling. Home sales fell two percent in August, the second monthly drop, and are slightly below last year's level, even as the total sales of twenty twenty-five remain narrowly positive. Building permits continue to lag, and one of the things, the reason that is important, because what pulls us out of a recession is building permits, okay, housing, all right? Mortgage rates eased slightly, oh great, I love this, mortgage rates eased to six point four percent. And for those of you that have a mortgage rate that's two point five percent, you don't want to sell your house because that's free money. I just wanted to kind of see that, because it's mixed. And one of the things you have to watch out for with that, those numbers, is the stag, is stagflation, okay? And that could be, that, that, that really, it creeps up on you. And we're seeing, we're seeing more and more of it, okay, so we're going to have to see how it works out. Now, this slide, this slide, I'm seeing, see it on camera here, if I can get it adjusted correctly. This shows all the projects, the Hampton Roads, the HR, the DPO, and which identified the projects, and then the HR TAC, which is the Accountability Commission, basically funds these projects, okay? At the top, at the top of the sheet, it shows five point three billion in, in construction. That's the largest construction projects going on right now on the East Coast of the United States. Now, New York had some, but they've kind of been, they've been, the money's been pulled back on those. But these are, this is a huge sum of money, and every project's listed down here. And if you see under the HR BT expansion, you'll see that three point, excuse me, it's got three point five five billion for the, for the tunnel, and then you'll see twenty-five million for that SEIS. That's the environmental study, that was, that's what it costs just to do that tunnel. The environment's twenty-nine million dollars. These numbers are really, really huge. So now, if you go next slide, it talks about the priority projects, which are the list, the ones you just saw, that's these, I'll get this thing so people can see it. But that, that's a list of all the priority projects, includes all the widening of Seventeen, I mean, excuse me, of I sixty-four. Talks about the bridge, the, excuse me, the tunnel, and then goes to the High Rides Bridge, the interchange. And it's going, what it's doing is it's going from, from the north, coming down, and then it's sweeping back around to the, you're doing the HR BT, and then it's going to the Monitor Meramec, and it's working up through Bowers Hill. So all these projects have been identified, and the reason, if you go to the next slide, the reason these projects can be funded is based on the amount of money that the point seven percent in sales tax we were allowed to raise, and the gas tax in twenty thirteen under the bill, I think it was House Bill, yeah, twenty thirteen. And if you look down at the totals on this page, you'll see right at the bottom of that long column at the top here, that's this list in here, what you'll see is the expenditures, okay? And they, like, the, like, up the prior years, the prior, it starts with twenty twenty-four. The prior years is over five billion dollars in expenditures, okay? And then this thing continues on out to twenty thirty-one, and every year you see these, they keep adding on till you get to seven, right now, seven point roughly six billion dollars. So in other words, the money that we were able to raise has allowed us to leverage that money to get all these bonds to pay for these projects. And if you look, continue on that sheet to the right, you'll see under there where, how they get this money. And this thing's called Pago, and Pago, as the name implies, you pay for it as you go, right? If we had been limited to Pago, I can tell you, based on my years of experience with the TPO and HR TAC, we would have none of these projects. We would never be able to get the money for taxes or from tolls, we'd never, we'd just never have the money. State would come in and give us some money, but they would, I don't know what they would buy. And if you look at the debt, they're paying for this, so, so from the Pago, we were able to get two point five billion dollars from HR, the HR TAC, the, the Hampton Roads Transportation Fund debt, okay, is three point three billion dollars. And then you have tolls where we get six, almost half a billion, six hundred fifty-five million dollars. And then if you took it to VDOT, that the state actually gave us, we, I didn't, this was kind of surprised me, we actually got seven hundred seventy-seven million dollars out of the state.
That's all?
Okay, and, and, but the federal government, yeah, that's all, but the federal government came across with two hundred seventy-six million. So I sixty-four, if you think about it, it's a federal highway system, and we are paying in, in Hampton Roads ninety percent of the cost of all these projects. The state's giving the seven hundred seventy-seven million, and the, but the federal government coughed up only two hundred seventy-six million. I will tell you, that wouldn't even cover the trestle into, into one of those, to the Hampton Roads Bridge Tunnel. And then the last one is the HRT cash flow, okay? Yeah, it's, it's, there's a lot of stuff in here, okay, a lot of numbers. But the, the, the one to, to look at here is the total revenue, okay, which is four point six billion dollars, okay? That we've been able to collect, and you can look at it on a year-to-year basis. Above that, on the total, it says revenue, and then it has a total. You can see on year-to-year, we are averaging from the, from the, from the sales tax, that's seven tenths of a sales tax and a gas tax, we're averaging almost three hundred million dollars a year, okay? And that's what you have to do, you've got to be able to have the money that you can go to the bond market, you can raise the debt for that, and you can get some good rates if you got the muscle and the, you know, the, the, the money behind you there. And then you take that money and you can leverage these billions of dollars of projects that actually will enhance our ability to create business and, and protect our, our military bases for rapid deployments and movement of troops and supplies. And, you know, you think about our port, our port hires, overall, the employment tied to the port across the state of Virginia is two hundred and, two hundred and fifty thousand people, all right? It's ten percent of the economy of, of Virginia, just out of our, our one port, okay? Which is, which is pretty amazing. So I wanted you to just kind of get a taste of the stuff that we, that what we've been doing. We're part of this, we've got a lot to be proud of, that we've been able to create these projects. Eventually, they're, they're on track, that's, that's a big part of it. We, I was there when they broke through the tunnel with the, the boring machine. I watched it, watched it come out the other side, and that completed, that completed the basic building of the tunnel, okay? So that seventy-two million dollar piece of machinery kind of, you know, it got us to where we are now. And they're now creating, finishing up the, the parts where they've got to do the road part through the tunnel. They're finishing up the bridge, the trestles, which are amazing now to see, if you haven't been over for a while. And one of the hardest, hardest things now to deal with, and Sheila and I had to deal with it going over to the, to Chesapeake for the regional meetings, is that they're now doing the, the kind of toll lanes. And, I mean, it goes from Tidewater Lane forever, and it took us almost like, it took me forty-five minutes just to get through that one piece, which generally would only take ten minutes at the most. And that construction's going to be going on until this thing's, this thing's finished. So there's a lot of things, a lot of stuff still happening, we've made a lot of progress. I just wanted you to kind of get a taste of it, okay?
Thank you very much, Tom.
What's that tunnel project, when's it slated to end?
Which one?
The Hampton Roads Tunnel.
Oh, the Tunnel, I think it's twenty-seven.
Twenty-two, twenty-eight?
Yeah, no, twenty-seven, I think that's when it's done, it slipped a year.
Early, early or mid?
Like, who knows? Who knows?
Okay, thank you.
I don't know.
Stephen, do you have a something, do you like to add?
No, I think I'm going to try to save my voice for the remainder of the evening. But I will remind everybody that in a week and a half, we do have Halloween. So we have a lot of kids out at nighttime on the road, walking around for treats, so please be mindful and please be careful.
Okay, Doug, do you have anything to say?
I do. First of all, November fifth is voting day. And our, our registrar did a tally of how many of our voters in York County have actually voted through early voting, and the numbers are surprisingly low, seventeen percent on average. Number of voters who have elected to either do the mail-in ballot or show up at the registrar's office and, and vote in advance. And that's a low number, which is not a good sign, because that, that either means everybody's lining up on election day, or they're being, or they're procrastinating. And I'm, I'm fearful of the procrastination, so if you're listening to me, get out and vote. I wanted to thank our chair. Mrs. Knoll has, has asked this board to consider doing a board retreat for some time, and we, we did that on October eighth and ninth, we visited three different counties, Enrico, Stafford, and Hanover. Enrico, yeah, I say Enrico, Spanish spelling.
It's Canadian.
Yeah, Canadian, hey, don't talk about Jays. I, I just want to thank Sheila for pulling that together. We, we spent a lot of time with those three counties talking about economic opportunities, how they're managing their capital, how they're developing new technologies coming into those centers, what the revenue stream is like. And I think it was just a tremendous learning opportunity, and I thank you for doing that.
Yeah, I would, I would like to agree with Doug on the, on the retreat. It was very informative and educational, I think we learned a lot there. And so I appreciate all the hard work that the staff did putting that together and getting us there and back safely. I had, I had my, my hands were clenched a couple of times with Earl, but it was a fucker factor that got me that, but anyway, that was a great opportunity. And I, I certainly for one, learned a lot, and we'll take that education and maybe make some good decisions moving forward with that. So with that, I'm done.
Thank you. I, I think it was a wonderful opportunity, I have to thank staff for doing it, I have to thank the board members for agreeing to do it, because we need to get out of our skin every once in a while and see how the other part of the world lives, and maybe learn some new ideas from other areas. And I hope that we did, and I think it opened our eyes on many opportunities. And I hope that York County will benefit from the things that we learned on this trip. Now, normally I don't talk too much, and everybody talks, but I do have something to say today. This, this, this morning, I've got little bits and pieces here. This morning I attended the State of Transit, and that was put on by the Hampton Roads Transit, WADA, that's the Williamsburg Area Transportation Alliance or whatever, and Suffolk Transportation. One thing that came out of it was during COVID, bus ridership dropped ninety percent. But fortunately, it's continued to bounce back, and last year, HRT actually had eighty-six thousand riders. Just think of that, eighty-six thousand people, riders, took advantage of public transportation. The transit leaders have learned that, and this is something that the county is learning as well, is that five-year goals are not enough. You, you need to think longer, and you need to plan for longer goals. Transit, as we all know, is expensive. But the economics of this form of transportation is really so important, even when you consider the cost to local, state, and the federal government. Considering economic development, for every dollar earned, there's a five-dollar return on our investment. Seventy-seven to eighty percent of federal funding transit receives flows to the private sector by providing service to riders, and this mobility provides for job creation. Our low-income population especially relies on public transportation, and many nonprofits fortunately supply them with bus tickets so that they can get to their jobs. The hotel, motel, restaurant, and small business sector really need public transportation for their workers. Our senior or health impaired population really also need public transportation. The speakers talked about micro-transit, I like that term, it's a little new one to me. And, and micro-transit serves these populations. A phone call will bring service to your doorstep supposedly in fifteen minutes. I haven't tried it, but I wonder how that really works. The bottom line, though, is that funding public transportation, although very, very expensive, is very, very necessary. Those who are responsible for the systems continually look for ways to be more cost-effective, yet meet the needs of our population. They look not only to local government for funding, but they depend heavily on federal and state resources. And when you think about it, I think our tax dollars are well-spent. So that's my remarks for this evening, and I think we're now going to go to the, to the consent calendar. And on the consent calendar, if I get through all of this, item number eleven, approval of the minutes. Item number twelve is retirement recognition for Jason, Jason M. Watkins Senior. Thirteen is to authorize a contract with Blue Line Solutions School's Zone Monitoring and Enforcement Service. Fourteen, authorized memorandum of understanding with VIPC, which we heard from before. Fifteen is a tax refund request. Item sixteen is to accept and appropriate the twenty twenty-five Port Security Grant Award. Seventeen is to adopt Friday, December twenty-sixth, as official county holiday. And before I'm going to ask the board members, let me just say something about that, I'll take the moment of privilege. I want to take a moment to recognize our incredible county staff. Over the past year, we've taken on major projects. Over the past year, we've taken on major projects, met tight deadlines, and you've done it all with professionalism and heart. The results of our recent national community survey speaks volumes. Our residents are happy with the services we provide and proud to call York County home, as always do, a direct reflection of our employees' dedication and commitment. So in recognition of that outstanding work, the Board of Supervisors wanted to do something meaningful. We're pleased to announce an additional holiday for all county employees this year. It's a simple but heartfelt way to say thank you. Thank you for the long hours, the teamwork, and the care you bring to everything that you do. We are all very proud of this team and grateful for each of you. Your efforts make York County a truly exceptional place to live and work. Now, this, in past years, well, a few years ago, the Board of Supervisors would suddenly decide that because of our exceptional staff, we would grant you an added day at Christmas time, and then we put that into the calendar. So this time, we're doing it specially, because I know the state is doing it also, but I think it's more important that down in the trenches, we do it as well. So again, thank you, staff, and because of that, I hope you enjoy that extra day that we're giving you at Christmas time.
Assuming we pass the consent calendar.
That's it, well, now, you do not think that after what I said, that they would dare not to pass. Okay. So is there anything on the consent calendar that anyone could tear to pull?
13.
Which one?
13.
13. Anybody else? Okay, 13. That's authorize a contract with Blue Line Solutions School Zone Monitoring and Enforcement Services. So I think that comes under the sheriff. Does it not? Would you like to talk to him?
Well, actually, that was, no, that was not the one I wanted to call him, so one with the boat, whatever that was.
What did he say?
The boat?
There was one in here talked about a grant.
The boat is number 16.
16.
16, I'm sorry, I had, I was looking at 13, and it's 16.
16 is the one you mean.
Then I would raise 13 as well.
Well, we've got 13, and we've got 16, so that again, I think you said, Sheriff.
Yeah.
Sheriff Montgomery, would you care to come forward?
I'll start with 13. Sheriff, you and I had a discussion this afternoon, so you're already aware of the question I'm going to ask. But I had some residents reach out to me and just ask about this new contract and whether or not the red light cameras or the, I guess it's the red light cameras are part of the blue line? I'm sorry, it's just the school zone cameras?
This is the school zone.
Strictly school zone, and whether or not those cameras would have the flock capability? In other words, would they be tracking every vehicle that went by?
No, they only record, same, it's the same system that we have right now, just a different vendor with better technology, but they're only tracking vehicles that exceed the posted speed limit by 11 miles per hour in the school zones. There's no other difference.
Thank you.
So Sheriff, you explain it to me this way, because I know we get the flock cameras and the blue line camera, yeah, blue line cameras mixed up. Can you talk to, just kind of explain the difference between the two?
Flock cameras are the ALPRs that take photographs of vehicles, motion detected, and stored for 21 days by law in Virginia. You have to have a legitimate criminal use, use them.
They're license plate cameras, right?
Correct, they're license plate readers.
That's all they are.
And the blue line solution is the school radar cameras for radar enforcement.
But one takes all, gets all the DMV info, and one doesn't?
The flock cameras do not do DMV information, no. The blue line does provide us with the registered owner's information for the citations, yes.
So the reason I bring this up, because understanding that the flock cameras are really useful when somebody, there's a crime and somebody gets a license plate, or there's, that we know there's a license plate that's related to some crime, and it just says, there's a system that goes out there that all the agencies are using, this is look for this license plate, right? I mean, that's what it does. And then, so we've solved murders and stuff like that using flock cameras. They're very useful. We're, that's what, we're going to put 38 new cameras in the system, right?
We have, we have 32 cameras in York County right now, yes.
Right, we're getting ready to get six more, somewhere near. And then, and then the blue line camera, the blue line cameras take a picture of the vehicle.
Blue line records the speeding vehicles through school zones.
Right. And you get the picture, and that's, that's where it's related to the speed.
But no license plate?
Well, if they take a picture of the whole vehicle.
It provides the license, it provides the registered owner's information to be able to issue a citation for speeding, yes.
And the only reason I bring this up is because of the New Kent County use of the blue line cameras, or type of blue line cameras. And that's the 50,000 citations that they're issuing a week, 50,000 a week. That just blows me away. So a week.
The bottom line is, the blue line cameras aren't going to be using the same capacity as the flock cameras.
Correct.
I can do different things.
Thank you very much, Sheriff. Is there anything else that anyone wants to pull? If not, I'll entertain more.
How about the?
16.
Does it have another one?
It's 16.
No, we're talking about 13.
Okay, so this is a grant. I understand it's, Sheriff, this is going to be, it's going to be a law enforcement grant? The acceptance of a port security grant, is that going to be related to the sheriff? Okay, the sheriff's office, and it's going to be for 460,000. Now, of that, so we're going to end up, you're going to end up buying a boat?
Yes. This is specifically for a Marine Patrol boat for the sheriff's office. It's federal, it's a federal grant, a port security grant, and this would authorize us to move forward with you formally accepting those funds.
Okay, did we, so I'm trying to remember, who did we get a boat for last time? Was it the fire department? Okay, that was the big boat for the fire department. So now you got your boat, right? Okay.
Correct.
So, okay, I just, all right, sounds good.
Okay.
Sounds good, all right, thank you.
Anything else?
Madam Chair, I move the consent calendar.
Thank you very much. Roll call, please.
The motion made by Mr. Holroyd is to approve the consent calendar as submitted. Mr. Drury?
Yes.
Mr. Rome?
Yes.
Mr. Shepherd?
Yes.
Mr. Holroyd?
Yes.
Mrs. Knoll?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Okay. There is no new business, but we now need to go into closed meeting. Mr. Holroyd.
In accordance with Section 2.2-371A1 of the Code of Virginia, I move that the Board of Supervisors convene in a closed meeting to consider a personnel matter involving appointment of individuals to boards and commissions. Secondly, prospective business or industry or expansions of existing business or industry in accordance with Section 2.2371A5 of the Code of Virginia, I move that the Board of Supervisors convene in closed meeting to discuss a prospective business or industry or expansion of an existing business or industry where no previous announcement has been made.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Rome?
Yes.
Mr. Shepherd?
Yes.
Mr. Holroyd?
Yes.
Mr. Drury?
Yes.
And Mrs. Knoll?
Yes, thank you very much. There's only going to be one meeting in November, and the next regular meeting of the Board of Supervisors will be held at 6:00 PM on November 18th in the boardroom at your call. This meeting is adjourned.